The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
And I would entertain the motion for a closed session.
I move that the Board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 print one, print C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 print one, print F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except or per print B applies which, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit teacher performance, employee health insurance coverage, and administrative hiring, and pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 print one, print E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specific specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit superintendent search consultant contract and Oak learning contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Vandenhevel.
Aye.
Sitnikow.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Shelton.
Aye.
All right, carried seven zero, and we'll convene across the hall, and I'll be back at six o'clock for the regular, or for the rest of the special board meeting. Um, oh, Sandy?
McCoy.
Here. Aye, sorry.
Shelton.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Sitnikow.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Vandenhevel.
Aye.
Carried seven zero. Um, also, I would like to, just for people in the audience and ourselves, um, our special board meeting was transferred in, and the public comment around American Institute for Research wasn't included, but if it's okay with the Board, we, well, I will include it and add that as part of that conversation, we can do that by policy. I assume that's okay with everybody, all right. So, um, I will entertain the resignation, or sorry, the rec, the motion under resignations.
I move that the resignations, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Becker.
Aye.
Sitnikow.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Vandenhevel.
Aye.
Shelton.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the retirements, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Warren.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Aye.
Sitnikow.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Shelton.
Aye.
Vandenhevel.
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the.
I move that the employment of staff, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Shelton.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Vandenhevel.
Aye.
Sitnikow.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the employment of Georgina Cornu Zacharias as Associate Director of Bilingual Programs, twelve months, at the District Office Building, as presented, be approved, effective July 16, 2019.
Second.
Sandy.
McCoy.
Aye.
Vandenhevel.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Sitnikow.
Aye.
Shelton.
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the transfers.
I move that the transfers of staff, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Sitnikow.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Vandenhevel.
Aye.
Shelton.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the American Institutes for Research, AIR, be contracted to serve as a lead turnaround partner at Washington Middle School for the second and final school year 2019-20, at a cost of $216,000, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Yes, sir. People gonna present?
Yeah, we do have people. Judy and John.
We have our Associate Superintendent for Continuous Improvement, John Magus, joining us, along with our Executive Director for Secondary Schools, Judy Wiegand.
Hello, thank you for getting used to the new microphones. I apologize in advance if I cut anybody off, I will try to refrain from that as we get used to it. So, basically, we are here tonight, and we have some shared objectives related to our presentation. Basically, tonight, we want to have an opportunity for an end-of-year review of our school success process, where we started, working with AIR, also thinking about our co-interpretation process, measures of success, behavior team support updates, celebrations, and care for the caregivers. So, this really is meant, when we met in, in June, we had an opportunity to share some preliminary information, and this is meant as an opportunity to provide greater detail of information on our measures of success. There still are a few things that we're waiting for the actual results on, for, for instance, the forward exam, the information has not yet been shared, and even if it were shared, it would still be embargoed, but we, we do have the STAR assessment, which is a very accurate projection of what those scores would be. So, we do have that, those measures. And when we met in June, we wanted to have an opportunity to come before the Board and share more about what the results were, because that was something that we heard from the Board, is something that was important. There were three other things that the Board largely voiced, that they were, they were concerns, that we wanted to make sure that they were addressed. One was, in looking at the support of the American Institute of Research for turnaround partnership, we were hoping that it was going to be a little bit more of a gradual release, and the Board noted that the, the price tag of, of $286,000 was something that we felt was a little bit more expensive than we wanted to look at. Another piece that was, that was brought forward by the Board was really that we wanted to make sure that we were doing the best job possible of making sure that the best practices for Washington weren't just applied to Washington, that we were applying them throughout the district, and what was going to be our mechanism to make sure that, that was happening. A third piece that was really important was making sure when we're looking at Washington, and other schools, but Washington in particular, what is it that we're doing around behavior and culture specifically? The academic portion was very important to us, but also, the academic engagement is one piece that turns around behavior, but what are the other pieces we have, in effect, related to structure, supports for teachers, as well as supports and interventions for students? So, the presentation that we're, we're coming forward presents the results, but it also presents a new proposal that is a hybrid of what we presented in June, as well as taking into effect things that were shared with us previously. So, that's where we are beginning. When we, when we started the process, just a little quick trip through history, when we looked at what is it that we want to do related to support, supporting Washington, we knew, when we looked for a turnaround partner, that we had tried many things that seem like the logical argument. There were, there were, there were many members of the Board now, and previously, that said, what if we took that money and put it into staffing? Doesn't that make sense to put it into staffing? And it does. It does make sense, but we've tried that method multiple times for multiple years to put it into staffing, and we can go into the ratios later of, of what the, the expenditures have, have been, but we really have tried to give more administrative support, we've tried to give more support around staffing to support students, and we still were not seeing the trajectory change. And what we're about to show you tonight is really that the results of the work at Washington, Washington had been in decline, and pretty significant decline, for multiple years, and the data is showing that not only have we leveled out as far as our performance, which is a pretty significant task for, for a school that has struggled, but we're beginning the, the turn upward, and that is really promising for us. Dr. Wiegand?
Okay, thank you. All right, so as we move forward, we'll take a look at, one, the measures of success that were defined at the start of the school year, back in November, as well as then, where are we at when it comes to our end-of-year report? And, Kristen, if you could click on the measures of success, thank you. Hopefully, we've had an opportunity to go through this. So, again, starting with the academic piece, of taking a look at how we did when it came to setting the goals for both ELA and math, and having our students gain one year of academic growth, as measured by the STAR assessment. As Mr. Magus mentioned earlier, we do not have our forward exam scores yet, at this time, but we are taking a look and using STAR as our predictor. So, for English Language Arts, you can see that we've made some, some gains, and we did, we're predicting to meet the goal. Math, we did not. And in reviewing where we're at with math, certainly being able to engage students in the humanities, when it comes to ELA, social sciences, and so forth, it is easier than engaging students and helping them see the relevance in, in math and science, and so we need to work differently when it comes to showing the relevance of math and engaging our students in a different way, in order to see better results.
It is important to note, though, that even though we didn't meet the goal, we did make progress towards the goal. So, progress is being made, yet many of the goals we set are also aspirational goals, goals with 100% of students achieving a certain measure of success, and showing progress towards the goals is an important piece. We do want to reflect when we don't make a goal, but progress is important as well.
Also, regarding all students improving by one year's academic growth, as measured by STAR, again, certainly success, more success in, in reading than in, in math, but again, certainly seeing things moving in the right direction. Under Culture and Climate, taking a look at disciplinary incidents and suspensions, as we referenced, we are on track for the same or fewer disciplinary incidents. And then, when it came to the Culture and Climate pieces related to Staff Perception Survey, although the survey results were sent to executive directors, we have not delved into those yet with our principles, but on the guidance and advice of Dr. Langenfeld and Mr. Magus, I did pull those questions, if we want to take a look at those this evening, to take a look at how staff responded to those. Is that acceptable? Because I know that putting things in a presentation after you've already had it is not, yes.
When were those questions administered?
I can check with Dr. Stramp, but I believe it was during April and May, but I will double check, we're gonna go to the Staff Perception Survey admin, window.
Okay, that's, so, but it is entirely possible that there are staff that have not, that aren't in the building any longer, that, it's possible. So, is it fair to say that we actually do not have the same staff as we had in the?
Sorry, yes, yes.
So, when we look at that, I think it's important to think about, we're getting feedback from staff that maybe there's turnover. Is that fair? Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's take a look at those results, if you'd like. Thank you. So, as I take a look at the three questions from the Perception Survey that were indicated as our measure of success, I would say that we have similar results when it comes to, like, the academics, some successes and some where we didn't meet the goal, or go in the right direction. So, when it comes to decreased staff reporting, that academic expectations are too low, below 15% agreement, and increase in agreement to 60%, that academic expectations are just right. You can see the comparison between 1718 and 1819, moving in the right direction, but certainly did not meet the 60% that was on the target. The second one, increased staff reporting that our school department operates as a team, again, fewer than 15% disagree or strongly disagree, and 85% or more agree or strongly agree. Again, you can see the comparison between 17 and 18, where in 1718, it was a 54.4% agree, strongly agree, to 56%, moving, again, in the right direction, but not the gain that we would like to have seen. And then, increased staff reporting that student discipline is being handled in a consistent manner by all staff, and as you can see from the survey results, this is not heading in the direction that we wanted to see, when it comes to this Perception Survey result. You can see that agree, at last year was 13.4%, where 7.1% agree. And so, again, we have to delve much deeper into this piece of that. So, again, kind of mixed results, so we see that we are decreasing when it comes to disciplinary referrals and suspensions, but yet, perception of the faculty and staff regarding the consistency is, so, again, just having this today and taking a look at it, certainly want to work more closely with the Washington team in moving forward.
Oh, Christina?
Thank you, thanks Judy. Specifically, as it relates to AIR, you can confirm that, or can you confirm that the, in the 1819 school year, AIR was not that, that particular money, that those interventions were instructional coaching, and not based on, around discipline and helping teachers form teams?
Correct.
Okay, so, I'm. Sorry, getting used to this. So, I'm just curious, then, how, as we think specifically, because I know we're getting a snapshot of Washington, but now I'm thinking specifically about the AIR proposal, how can we, or can you, as a professional, make the connection for the team and the discipline? If AIR was hired to do instructional practices, how can you make the connection, or can you, that the team survey question, the discipline survey, is connected to that, that financial investment in Washington?
Thank you for bringing that up, and it's not, right, because the AIR contract was specific, related to the instructional coaching and the leadership coaching piece of it, and so, certainly cannot ignore the Culture and Climate piece, and behavior, and so forth, that's why I did include the Behavior Report, although that is our team, and not contracted with AIR. So, thank you.
One follow-up question. Thank you, I appreciate that, that clarity, and I just forgot my question.
I know, I'll come back.
Dr. Langenfeld.
Can you speak specifically, if I read things through accurately, the team piece is of interest to me, I'm glad you brought that up. Did not, did AIR not work with the, with the teams in the English Language Arts Department, the collaborative learning teams, or?
Yes, they certainly worked with the collaborative learning teams, taking a look at instructional information, so taking a look at performance on certain common assessments and so forth, taking a look at standards and instructional practices was really the main focus for the instructional coaching.
So, then, would they have been working collaboratively and collectively around a universal, or no? Was that the expectation?
Now, related to, to universal practices as a whole, there was some general training of, of all, from what I understand, within, within a department, but it wasn't individual, and I think, and I might have misunderstood Ms. Shelton, but when you asked the question about teams, were you talking about houses as teams, or were you talking about teams of teachers?
Whatever that.
Right.
Team means, I guess, paper.
Right, and that meant teams, as in teams of teachers. The one, one piece that I would say, even though AIR wasn't contracted specifically around behavior and culture, the leadership guidance that they provided, as far as new structures to put in place, and the work that was done with Ms. Olson around that, was supporting her as a resource and thinking partner in changing some of the structures, and we'll talk more about that coming up, but as I noted in our, our presentation in June, the results, the system that was in place when, was, when Ms. Olson was hired and when AIR started, was already the system that had been in place the year before, largely the schedule, the, the structures, and, and through the guidance and through the support of, of AIR and the leadership of Ms. Olson, there are a number of new strategies that are in place that address behavior, and there are also things that we learned as a district around, through our work with AIR, around what we needed and wanted to do differently related to behavioral support at Washington, and that is coming up within the, the agenda as well.
Go ahead, Christina.
Thanks, John. In terms of staff survey, was this the only survey that was given to staff in terms of their satisfaction with AIR, and their, its effectiveness, and their teaching strategies in their classroom? Is there anything else that we could be looking at in terms of staff surveying?
So, the surveys that are referenced here, the Staff Perception Survey, and then there's also a Climate Survey, and those are not specific to AIR, those have been in place prior to the start of this, the school year. So, they weren't specific about, are you satisfied with AIR, but it was more about, again, these are done in all our buildings.
I have a follow-up, sorry. So, is there a sense at Washington about the satisfaction, so, do we know about the satisfaction of the staff with AIR over the 1819 school year?
A formal survey was not administered to the faculty and staff to get that feedback, so it would be all anecdotal.
Okay. Rhonda.
So, thanks for asking that, Christina, so that, when someone had actually approached me today and asked me about, is there an executive summary? So, what that would look like, how they explained it to me, was something, so what we see now, but also, what she, Christine is referencing as far as staff survey and getting a feedback about that, and that would also include any staff that left the building during the school year as well. I think that would be important, because clearly, they're invested in that experience as well. I think it's also worth mentioning that if there was to be an executive summary of what happened in regards to the investment of AIR at Washington Middle School, when we look back at the history of how we got here, we remember a teacher came forward and resigned in front of the school board, okay? And then, what that did was it brought a lot to life, as far as what was going on, concerns, challenges, et cetera. There was a, there was a press conference that was held not long after that, with a lot of people standing behind the superintendent, among other district leaders, and there was a lot of conversation around bringing in community partnerships. And so, with regards to community partnerships, then, if you're thinking about what that looks like, the executive summary of the, of the very large, intense, expensive, I know, $30,000 a month is what we spent last year and invested in the school, it was brought to my attention that there should also be an executive summary that includes, were there any community partnerships that, that, you know, we joined forces with, because there was a lot of conversation around that that was going to be a very integral part of success for Washington. And so, with regards to that, there should be some sort of report on any community partnerships that, that did occur, and what, what their findings are as well. Because if we are, you know, bottom line, if we are, are taking a, you know, substantial amount of money from the community for this project, that we should definitely have built some partnerships with some summary of that around it, and I'm just wondering if we have any of that as well, and if it's available, and if we don't, was there a discussion of, of why not?
Can I ask you a clarifying question? Are you talking about an executive summary from AIR on their interventions and their contract with us, or are you seeing that more coming from the administration on, what's the pathway to get there?
So, as it was explained to me, again, the executive summary would include what we have, but also, any sort of, any sort of report, anyone that was invested in, in the last school year, as far as community partnerships, just in general, as well as AIR, and any of their, their material that they, that they used as well, and their findings, which would be, you know, would provide more transparency around what was involved, as well as what, you know, their thoughts and feelings on the whole thing.
I appreciate the input, and I think that that's something that we can take under consideration. The measures that we have are the measures that were shared with the Board, and so, the, the results of those measures, to the degree possible with, with the data at this time, are what we brought forward for the measurement and for the consideration. However, the more information we have, the more it informs our practice, and I think that we can take that under consideration for our work within. We do, we do value the community partnerships, and we have had some additional community partnership work, and we can work with Kim Shanok on our, our person who works with, with our, our community partners, and we can, we can look to put something together, because I think that it is important for us to think about, what does that inclusive community safety net look for?
Dr. Langenfeld, and then Rhonda again.
You know, I, I thank you, John, for reminding us that we brought the metrics out last fall and didn't have the, didn't have the additional metrics. Having said that, I think of the mindfulness room and the many community partners who were investing in that. I think of our partners with, it used to be Live Wellow now, and the, the social emotional pieces around the yoga kinds of opportunities and mindfulness that's been going on as well. I mean, I think there's a lot of pieces, and I know we have a Washington teacher in the room that could probably share much more, just off the, the top of my head, that they immediately come to mind. The piece that I would go back to, is this an overall evaluation of Washington, are we talking about AIR, and that's, or is it intersected so much that, that, you know, that's really what I think the Board has to, that's what we're talking about here, is it, is it, are we talking about AIR, or just doing a full executive summary of the, a reflection of the year at Washington? Because we're prepared to talk about the impact that AIR has had on the, the teaching and learning focus, so, kind of two different pieces, that's all. I mean, we, we can certainly be prepared to, to bring the full year in review as well, but that isn't what we're prepared to do.
Rhonda.
Thank you, but with all due respect, we have to today be prepared to spend another $200,000, and so, you're asking the Board to invest on top of their nearly $400,000, which added to roughly three, or $30,000 a month last school year, to invest in that, so I think it's very important to under, if we don't understand where, where everything to invest in that. So, I think it's very important to under, if we don't understand where, where everything is coming together as far as, you know, a comprehensive plan, approach, then I'm not really sure, the story's not being told. And I think in order to approve another two hundred thousand dollars into, into one school, it's important, especially when, you know, they, they didn't fulfill, fulfill their part of the contract that we agreed to. It's important that we do have more information and that we have an understanding of what other things are in place. Because we also know that we've had parents and community members share concerns with us. You know, that's part of the story as well. We do know that there are incidents that have been, you know, it, it, I would beg to say, are there less incidents or are they just classified differently? It's been brought to my attention that there's been shifting of that, not just from one person, various people. So, I think it's important as a board member, I need personally to know who's all on board. Because right now, this, the results of this are not impressive. They fall flat for the mess, the investment that's on the table. And it's, it's kind of presumptuous to think that somebody could get another two hundred thousand dollars. So, I think having more information in an executive summary when you're asking for more tax dollars when the original plan fell flat is, is a really important part of this conversation.
So, we're prepared to share the metrics that were decided upon and, and, and agreed to by the board. If the board is changing the metrics for success, then it's, it's something that we would have to consider for the future. It wouldn't be something that we couldn't consider or gather data tonight while we, we're, we're here. It is something that we want to consider the full picture because the full picture is important. When we think of that full picture, we're also looking at how many hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money have we invested again and again over the years related to staffing? Previously, in the fourteen, fifteen school year, the staff ratio of student to, student to staff was one student for over eight, I'm sorry, eight students for, for one staff member. We're now under six to one for our ratio. So, we've, we've invested in staff. And we've shown that that investment in staff produced some results, but it didn't produce the trajectory change in results. And I think that, that looking at the hard work of the staff, the teachers at Washington and the administration, the continued downward trajectory for Washington, year after year, was of enough significant concern for the district and significant concern for the board that we needed to explore additional options for a new way of looking at things. And so when I think about that new way and that investment, if I were to put a one hundred dollar bill on the table representing the entire district budget, the amount that we're talking about expending on A I R for, for support that could be trajectory changing and continuing to trajectory change would represent about eight pennies. So, it is a lot of money. I'm not dismissing that. But it's also a lot of money to continue to pursue the, the strategy that we tried for years that didn't work. And I want to make sure that we're investing in something that is really going to, to change trajectory over time. So, I, I do appreciate that we're thinking about maybe spending it in different ways. But we are learning, we are seeing a turnaround, a flattening of, of, of the downward progress and a begin of an upturn at Washington. And that is, that is significant considering that time change. Also, we're not just learning about how we can support Washington, and we'll talk more once we finish the, the, the measures. I think, I think that there's more that's explained later in the, in the presentation. But how are we not just taking this and expending it on Washington? Because if it's a single school expenditure that's learned and applied there and not applied elsewhere, then shame on us. We need to make sure that it is something that if it's worthwhile, that it's something that we are very thoughtfully, very strategically and very supportively making sure that it is supported in other schools. And that's what we'll share in just a couple of minutes after we go through the, the rest of the metrics that were decided upon.
And I was gonna say too, I mean, we're at slide two of the presentation. So, if board members can hang on to their questions till the end so that we get the full picture and the full story of, of what's going on at Washington, then I think that will be helpful. So, at this point, I'm gonna turn it back to you, John and Judy.
So, going back to the measures of success, after the piece regarding the climate questions, we take a look at the attendance. And again, you'll note that, again, we have shown improved attendance. But we're also stating that we are aware school-wide attendance is an issue. And so as we talk about moving forward, talking about our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, with the Be Great Graduate Program, as well as the changing of one of the positions where we'll have a manager of student engagement, attendance and advocacy on staff and more clearly defining that individual's role in connection with that homeschool partnership will be, I think, very important. And then also at the, at the end was about the reverse dots, making sure that our students have a positive relationship, that they can indicate that there is an adult in the building. And so as you take a look at that, they had ninety seven percent identified at least one adult and three percent did not and shared a reason why. And the schools are ready following up with the three percent of those students.
Yeah, if, if it's a clarifying question, that's fine. But I just don't want to get into the weeds of having a conversation about the pros and cons at this point.
Thank you. Yes, I will not get into the weeds until the end. Judy, can you help me? And I'm not a data, it's not a strong piece for me. So, hopefully you can help me with this. So, I'm looking at the attendance data where it says the baseline is, you know, for seventh and eighth grade of the students who had a greater, greater number of absences, absences than fifteen days. That was the baseline, correct? And then where we were at the end of eighteen, nineteen shows the percentage that has shown improvement. It looks like those data sets are, how do they speak to one another? Because when I'm looking at that improvement, what is improvement based on? Is that just a reduction in the fifteen days? But it's just confusing to me.
Could, we could present that differently, but we're certainly taking a look at those students have more chronic truancy issues and trying to reduce that number.
So, is it, is it based on the fifteen days for the increase, shown improved attendance? Okay. So, you're saying that forty two point eight percent of seventh graders have shown improvement, meaning they've gone below fifteen days? Okay, thank you. That's okay. Thank you.
So, on our next slide, you talk about the monthly reports that were provided by A I R. So, again, the A I R monthly report from June of twenty nineteen is a summary of the work that had taken place throughout the school year. And then we also have our behavior team support update. And I won't open either one. We don't need to, but thank you for looking and checking on that. But I do want to highlight the fact that big picture, right? We are just finishing our fourth year of implementing multi-level systems of supports. And I would say in a school that is struggling, it, it should not come as a surprise that the systems that should be in place either were not, or if they are in place, they were not functioning at the level needed to address the academic and social emotional needs of our students. So, when you take a look at the support specifically, we contracted with A I R for, it was about building the capacity of the teachers to prepare, plan and deliver rigorous instruction. And having that at a much higher frequency than what we could provide here from District Office. You will see through the A I R report, the collaborative learning team expectations. And having a well-run collaborative learning team, that they are actually taking a look at common curriculum assessments, being able to respond to that data and talking about effective instructional strategies. Also, like process and protocol for quarterly data meetings. And then data alignment to school goals. Those are the pieces that I wanted to point out as very strong pieces from A I R. Our behavior team support update. And again, as Mr. Magus referenced earlier, even though A I R was not specific on behavior coaching by any means, they did lend that leadership coaching to Cindy. But I also want to give credit to our team and the work that was done here through our behavior coaches and providing that level of support. In previous presentations, we talked to you about CHAMPs and that type of training and doing that book study second semester. And we are now in the place of heading into the nineteen, twenty school year with more direct application. Again, kind of going from that theory to practice and then having a professional development plan that supports staff in meeting those universal expectations. And especially important is that professional learning and support for our monitors and paraprofessionals as well. It's really takes everyone at the school. Also, our change in the learning support team structure and having grade level problem-solving teams. Again, as we started pulling and taking and pulling off all these different layers of Washington this past year, noting a number of different areas that just needed to either be completely revamped and restructured or at least tweaked. So, again, as you read through those reports, you'll see that piece of it as a summary. So, it's important to the celebrations, again, coming together as a school and developing that sense of community. And having staff-student games, avid field trips, one on time to class challenges. And then care for the caregiver, an important piece. It is not easy, teaching. And being part of the work that is very, very critical. So, it's important that we take a look at how are we, again, supporting our teachers and the trauma-informed care training, specifically through the school safety grant, the self-care module, and then the compassion resilience toolkit for schools and being able to, again, take that learning and apply it to what's important at Washington Middle School. Sorry. Lessons learned. I would say certainly we're in the early stages of implementing and monitoring a continuous improvement system at Washington. And we're certainly taking the lessons learned from this past year and applying them to our other schools. And we say we have, are delivering a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Are we ensuring that all students are accessing that curriculum? Are we administering the common curriculum assessments? And then are we taking a look at that data and responding to that data? Again, a very important piece. The teachers, teacher support system. Building the capacity of the teachers to prepare, plan and deliver rigorous instruction, again, one of the main objectives from our work with A I R. And we need to continue to improve the working conditions of our teachers and our support staff. I think it's very important that they have that sense of efficacy, that they can and will be successful with our students. And the culture and climate system. And although not specific in the contract with A I R, they certainly then provided some technical assistance to evaluate and implement culturally responsive practices. Again, that meet the needs of our students and families. I'd say overall, for Washington, prior to going into the recommendations, keep in mind that, as John has mentioned, we've stopped that downward trajectory and have actually started to see movement in the right direction, direction. But I would also say that it's a, I think it's a fragile ecosystem. And so I think we have to be very careful as we move forward as to how we, what supports we continue to provide and what that looks like. So, our next steps as a district, did you want to?
So, thinking about our, sorry, thinking about our next steps as a district, we are focusing, of course, as we mentioned, on turnaround practices that are, are worked on through A I R, being shared with our leadership team here at District Office and with our principals as a whole. Particularly focusing on our schools that were identified under the E S S A work as schools that were needing to move in a, in a more positive direction. There are turnaround practices that we think will be very beneficial to a number of schools. Because we have to remember that Washington is sort of, it's to a degree, a segment in a stream. And there are tributaries to that stream and there are things that happen further down that stream when, when the students move on to high school. But what is it that we're doing related to turnaround practices in the feeder schools for Washington to make sure that when the students step foot into Washington or any of our schools, that they are very well-prepared as competently graduated, or competently transitioning elementary students ready for middle school? So, making sure those supports are there is really important. At our last meeting, Ms. Sitnikow, you, you mentioned that, that we want to make sure that we're not neglecting other schools. And so making sure that those pieces are, are there is really important to us. We also have begun a deeper look at continuous school improvement. That was part of our board presentation for the retreat that we were, that was the second half of the retreat that we'll be covering in August. So, in, in some respects, it was meant as a, as a laying of the framework, but with the other redesigned twenty twenty work that we did, it was proceeding so positively, we didn't want to interrupt the progress. But really, we need to be using deeper root cause analysis to go deeper with our solution finding. Because many times, well-intended people, myself included and others, we will look at the symptom of what's occurring and we will create a treatment for that symptom without necessarily digging as deep into the root cause. So, for instance, when we looked at previously, what's the challenge of, of challenge of Washington? It seemed that they needed more supervision and so we put more supervision in. But that didn't change the trajectory. It didn't change things. Even though there was a far more significant investment of, of time and money than, than occurred through the A I R investment, it was not a trajectory-changing investment. So, we wanted to be more responsible with deeper root cause analysis so that throughout Washington and throughout the rest of the district, when we're facing challenging problems, that we're addressing them fully. Also, we had our leadership teams from our schools attend our learning, I'm sorry, Leading for Learning Summit in Madison. And that was really the second part of the work related to this. We did the root cause analysis work with, with our schools. And then they were able to go even deeper with that related to data inquiry journal and what were culturally responsive practices that were, that were effective. So, we're trying, we, we are making sure that our efforts at Washington are carefully woven within our continuous improvement options and supports for the district as a whole. Another piece that we were considering related to continuous improvement at Washington Middle School is the implementation of, of CHAMPs as a school-wide classroom organization and structure. That was done as a book study by the staff throughout the year. But CHAMPs is really, within the classroom, what are the structures that lead to success? And we have a training coming up in August for all staff to participate and go deeper with that classroom training. Because there's nothing more frustrating or challenging than being in a classroom and feeling like you don't necessarily have the skills to meet the needs of the students in front of you. So, we want to make sure that we're supporting our teachers in having those skills. Not to say that there are teachers that aren't trying hard or teachers that aren't doing a great job. But we always look at what is it that we can take, even if we're really good, to become even greater. So, those are the things that we're looking at. We also mentioned the team structure, both the teams within the building, thinking about greater focus on the learning support team and its support of individual students. The collaborative learning teams, which go deeper with particular subject area content and making sure that there's a study of the work done afterward, after assessment to see what were the strengths and weaknesses, as well as our behavior team and our building leadership team. We also, a very important piece is the teams and houses structure that, that Principal Olson is putting into place in the coming year. Model middle schools have teams and houses that gather a finite number of teachers teaching core content and have shared ownership of a set group of students so that there, there's a commonality of who you're serving, a commonality in being able to work as colleagues, talking about solution finding. If, if a student is struggling with me but doing well with Dr. Wiegand, we, we can talk about what was successful for her or what seems to be a challenge for me and, and make progress in, in that. in that, in that sort as well. So within that, if you can flip to the next slide, thank you. We are, we are looking at more support through AVID, which is advancement via individual determination. It's a, it's a program that's throughout many of our schools, but really, it's focused on helping students that are in the middle and students who maybe have not been as successful traditionally from their family backgrounds and things of that nature, and making sure that we are doing everything possible to provide support and move towards more of a academic focus and a college-going, college-success experience. We also mentioned as well the care for the caregiver piece and relating to particular training on compassion resilience. When you're caring for somebody and when you're giving 110%, like our teachers do at Washington and our administration does, no matter how good you are, it can be taxing. And making sure that we don't have caregiver fatigue or compassion resilience, lack of compassion resilience, we want to make sure that those pieces are in effect so that people can come to work on a regular basis and feel refreshed and recharged. We also are looking at, and we are going to move towards increased district-level involvement by the teaching and learning and behavior teams. What we are doing for the coming year is we are allocating one full-time behavior coach to Washington Middle School and Franklin, split between the two. And this is, we're taking somebody who's already serving in that role but serving many, many schools and focusing their time deeply between the two schools. Because we want to make sure that those behavioral and cultural components that the board identified and that the staff has commented on are clearly addressed, not just through the training they'll receive this summer, but through ongoing support throughout the year that will be individualized for individual teachers, but also focus on improving team practices as a whole. And within our teaching and learning department, we have an individual who we've worked with quite a bit, Mike Fries, who is our secondary executive director for teaching and learning. He will be embedding himself far more deeply at Washington and at Franklin, spending a lot of time working with Franklin and Washington staff, looking at those teams that I described before, making sure that we're supporting the leadership and making sure that they're in place. His work will be multifaceted, but two important aspects are that he will be supporting that work and making sure that those changes and those supports are in place. But we will also be making sure that the, as we've expressed before, the lessons learned of Washington, it probably would be and is a very expensive investment at Washington to have A I R come for a second year. But if we look at taking the knowledge and the lessons learned from Washington and applying them not only to Washington but to Franklin as well, and then also training up and making sure that Mr. Fries is and others within our department are fully, fully understanding of what is working for those turnaround practices, then it's an investment made towards capacity improvement of our ability to serve schools as opposed to just an investment to fix one time at Washington. So those two investments are significant. So we are asking the board to support a final year, a second final year of A I R support as a turnaround partner for Washington Middle School. For the reduced amount, it had been $286,000 that we came to the board with previously in June. Hearing that that gradual release was not significant enough, we have worked towards a price of $216,000. And we very much recommend that this is an investment that we make to continue to work with A I R as they have stopped the downward trajectory, leveled off the performance of Washington, and shown some upturn in the performance at Washington. And again, it is a sizable investment, but in the scope of our resources as a district, we're talking about less than one-tenth of 1% of the budget. So when we think about the importance and the amount of time that we've talked about Washington, I believe that the teachers of Washington, the students, and the parents deserve the turnaround support through A I R.
Are there any, this, what I was thinking as we do finish up, any technical questions? And then see if there's anyone that would like to make public comment and then have whatever discussion board members want to have after that. Does that work? So are there any technical questions at this point? Okay, Christina?
John, so I had heard from some of the staff. Again, I know it's not a representative sample, but I'm curious if you can shed some light on this, that there were inequities of which staff had access or chose to seek the coaching with A I R, that not all staff sort of chose to and that there were differences in who did and who didn't. And there was concern that was shared about how that would sort of, that equity lens would show up in terms of the practices in the classroom. Can you speak to that at all for 1819 and then maybe shed some light on how that might look for 1920 to ensure that all teachers, if it, if this money would go through, would be available to them?
Sure. So when a new initiative is started in a school, quite often, one of the strategies that's used is to first partner and work with the willing participants and the people who are interested in being pioneers in a movement towards change. And so there was an interest by a number of people that were within the English Language Arts and Math Department to work more deeply with that partnership coaching. There were opportunities in which the coach worked with and met with the entire department for English Language Arts and Math, but there was more, significantly more intensive support for those that volunteered and wanted to have that support. I think it's important for us to look at in the coming year, as we look towards change, how are we making sure that everybody is accessing that coaching support? How are we making sure that we're documenting it and that we are, not in a punitive way, but we're holding people accountable for the changes that are expected? If I'm performing at a very high level and my class is incredibly engaging and I'm not having behavior issues and my results, my academic results are through the roof, if I can demonstrate that, that's, that's a different question as far as how much support I need. But if our results are not what they need to be from an individual, then we need to make sure that that support is there. And in general, we need to make sure the support is there for everybody who is within the math department and within the English Language Arts Department. When we talk too about special education and E L L, I think it's important that we're taking the best instructional practices with that equity lens, that we're making sure that those best practices of instruction for English and mathematics are applied for our more varied student population. So that would be something that's really important to me and to our team as a whole.
Okay, is there, do you have a form filled out? Just one? Okay. And then, I'll get to you in a minute. Oh, okay. All right. And then, yeah, okay. So I have one person that has requested to speak. Is there anyone else who wants to speak for the board for this particular item? Okay, I'll, do you have a form filled out? Okay. Well, there, that's a yellow form out on the table? Yeah, it would be helpful. You'll be called on second, so you'll have enough time to do that. And then hand it to... All right. And then Rhonda, before we call speakers, you wanted to ask something?
So when you say a technical question, what do you mean?
A question, question, as opposed to statements about, as opposed to follow-up statements about the answer to the question? Does that make sense?
Okay, I don't really know how to classify my...
Okay, we'll just ask it. That's fine.
Okay. I have a few. So can you, for the good of the order, can you, can you lay out the, you know, we had a contract with A I R, and we agreed to pay them $30,000 a month for the last school year. So we know, we met our, you know, we delivered on what we were going to do. Can you list again for everyone what the deliverables were supposed to be specifically? Please, thank you.
Sure. So we have...
Your microphone, John.
Sorry, we need to go back to the deliverables and the, so the, basically, Judy, if you could share the deliverables specifically, but, or really the measures, the goal, progress towards the goal, goals and achievement of those goals was our primary objective.
Sure, I don't know. Kristin, could you go to the A I R May-June report? Thank you. And then if you click, and so I guess for, I don't know if this addresses your question or not, let me take a look at the second page in that report, the fourth column over key deliverables and actions for this reporting period. That was my understanding of the deliverables as to what, from A I R. There's several pages.
But would you like me to read all of them? There's like...
There are nine pages of deliverables? Do you, we want the nine pages of deliverables read?
We have them.
Because basically, it says right here, by the end of 1819 school year, all students will make one year's academic growth in math as measured by the STAR assessment. And that came from A I R. So that's one. There was another one for E L A. And then...
I understand what you're, I'm sorry for the lack of clarity. There is similarity between the objectives and the measures. So the measures of success were, by the end of the 1819 school year, at least 49% of Washington Middle School students will score basic or above on the English Language Arts Wisconsin Forward Exam.
Can you, sorry, and then can you give the answer to what that is, the status of that, please?
Similar to what we shared previously, sure. Overall, 50% of the students did achieve that goal. And even though the information is based on the STAR exam as a forward, as a forward exam predictor, it's predicted that that goal will have been met. Forty-nine percent, or I'm sorry, 42% of Washington Middle School students will score basic or above on the math forward exam, and the result of that was 29% overall were forecasted. That was an increase as compared to the year prior, but again, that is based on a projection. That goal was not met, even though progress was made towards that goal. The next one is, all students will improve by one year's academic growth as measured by the STAR assessment. And looking at the percentage of kids that were making one year's growth, there were a significant number of kids that made the one year's growth. And it was, when compared to longitudinal data, it was an improvement over the year prior. So this is, as well as others, when the trajectory was downward and when it was a negative, negative downward trend of all these measures, stabilizing and showing an upward trend is a significant piece from my view.
Sorry, I just, but did, was the goal met?
There was progress towards the goal, but the goal was not met. So the next one, cohort group of seventh and eighth grade students will demonstrate reduced disciplinary incidents, administrative referrals and suspensions when compared to the 1718 school year. So again, looking at sixth graders now who are seventh graders and seventh graders who are now eighth graders. The result was, the seventh graders, there were 71%, 1.2% that were on track for fewer disciplinary instances, as well as eighth graders, 82.9%, and that goal was met. Decreased staff reporting academic expectations are too low, between 15% agreement and increased agreement to 60%. The academic expectations are just right, according to the staff perception survey. And there was an increase in that score of three, approximately 3% to, from, from 63.29 to 66%. So there was a 3% increase. So that...
We also have the staff perception survey.
Yep, sorry. So we do have the staff perception survey. And so if you want to go through those three, that would be helpful.
Sure. So decreased staff reporting that academic expectations are too low, below 15% agreement, and increased agreement to 60% that academic expectations are just right. So as you take a look at 1819, it is not at 60%, right? We have 2.4% that are too high, just right at 42.9%. So it did not meet the 60% that was benchmarked. The next one, increased staff reporting that our school department operates as a team. Fewer than 15% disagree or strongly disagree, and 83% or more agree or strongly agree. So again, taking a look at the, although moving in a positive direction, it did not get to 85%. It was at 56% up from 54. And then the third one, increased staff reporting that student discipline is being handled in a consistent manner by all staff. 15% disagree or strongly disagree, and 85% agree or strongly agree was the benchmark, and we moved in a different direction for that third one. The next one on the measures of success, when it comes to the cohort group of seventh and eighth grade students and the improved attendance compared to the 1718 school year, we did see the percentage has shown, has shown, the cohort has shown improved attendance. And then the last one was the, by the end of the 1819 school year, all Washington Middle School students that have attendance since September 2018 will have at least one adult they acknowledge as having a positive relationship with, as evidenced by the reverse dot feedback survey. We were at 97%, not 100%. Is that what you're asking? Okay, very good.
So I'm counting, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, roughly 10 goals that were set out. Is it nine? Am I counting wrong? Okay, sorry. Okay, nine goals. Three were met, just based on what was set as far as objectives, metrics, and that, so, right, is that fair? Three out of nine?
That is correct.
And that's, you know, this isn't anecdotal. This is, this is data. This is evidence. This is, you know, this is what we have to go by. And when this is what I have to turn around tomorrow and look at my constituency and say, I had nine goals on the table and three were met. So based on that, I need to be okay with moving forward. I, I'm just really concerned about, I would have felt better if even half of them were met. Some of these goals are related to the climate and culture in the building, and that's really important, I think fundamentally. I believe that you need to be able to have the environment where it needs to be in order... I would, I would bet if the environment was where it needed to be, there would probably be more goals and there would be less turnover. There would be, it would look much better. You know, for a person that, I didn't support the initial proposal because I was very concerned that the priority really wasn't climate and culture, and I just, I just don't believe that, if that's not in place, like personally, I don't believe this is the right time for A I R. So when I look at what was, what was asked of A I R and the school and the district and the community as far as what surrounds all of the objectives, when you have three out of nine that weren't met, if you were to take this project... have three out of nine that weren't met, if you were to take this project and apply it as a classroom project and it was a map, maybe a math project and you, you looked at all the factors coming into play and you thought about, you know, the question was asked, would you move forward? If I'm a student and I take all of the, the information that I have, I'm pretty sure the answer would be, you know, now what? Something else. Let's re-figure, let's reimagine this because it's hard to shy away from the facts. And the facts are, there were three out of nine goals met. I don't know what other, I mean, if we had a food service budget for four hundred thousand dollars and we contracted with vendors and they only met three out of nine goals that we needed them to to deliver the objectives, it's very unlikely we would continue partnering with them. I wouldn't imagine that would be the case. I think just trying to stay as pragmatic as possible and as objective as possible. You know, behind all this, I know the information that I've received over the last school year from staff in the building, they're not buying into this. They're not. And if you don't have staff buy-in, you're going to see numbers that you see, you're going to see goals unmet. I think that's just universal, right? That's just something we know.
Okay, I think now we're getting away from questions.
No, I'm actually.
No, you're making statements now about the answers to the questions.
And I'm going to continue to make those statements because this is a lot of money.
I'm going to ask the people that have asked to speak, I'm going to have them come forward so that we can get their input too.
Great.
The first, the first person is actually representing someone. I'll ask, the the person is Andrew Austin, but Christina Shelton has been asked to read his statement, so. Go up there, yeah. And please, in general, we like, if you could keep your comments to five minutes and prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address.
Okay, oh, is it on? Hello?
It should be on, yeah.
Oh, feels good to be up here. Hi. So I'm, was asked tonight to speak on behalf of Andy Austin, Andrew Austin. He couldn't be here, so he shared a letter and I'm here to speak on his behalf. Dear School Board members, my name is Andrew Austin. And also I'll note, he, Andy lives on Porlier Street. I'll get the street number for you. Sandy, he did not share that with me. I am a tenured faculty member in the Department of Democracy and Justice Studies at the University of Wisconsin-Green Bay. I am a member of the community. My eldest son graduated from East High School and is now at the University of Wisconsin Law School. My youngest son is currently at East High School as a sophomore. My wife Mona is a paraprofessional with the school district. Unfortunately, I cannot attend tonight's meeting, but I have asked School Board Member Christina Shelton to read this letter on my behalf. I apologize for the length of this letter. Holding advanced degrees in sociology, a master of in a doctorate specializing in crime and delinquency, I have been an educator and researcher for more than twenty-five years. I have been at the university for nearly twenty of those years. I have prevented scientific papers at professional social science conferences on using sociological theory to explore ways of reducing delirious climate change in urban school settings, as well as the politics of anti-bullying public school programs. I have presented and published papers on many topics relevant to my expertise. I recognize that there are problems at Washington Middle School. I have read news stories about improvements that have been made over the course of the last year, and I applaud these successes. I am sympathetic to the need of a great, to create a climate conducive to academic achievement and personal growth. Indeed, the early part of my career at U W G B was working with the Green Bay community on behavioral and social issues surrounding truancy, climate, and literacy. I want to spend just a minute discussing those activities for the record. In early two thousand, I was a consultant to the truancy assessment at Bateman Center in Green Bay, organizing data and revamping the center's intake assessment device to increase precision of results. I authored and submitted four reports to the school district on truancy and performance between two thousand and two and two thousand and three. On two thousand and two, I was consulted on the East High Climate Survey. This was an elaborate project in which I was involved in all aspects adapting the survey, training staff on the survey, and coding results. I authored two reports in two thousand and two, a comprehensive report and a report suitable for public consumption. I authored a later, later I authored another report in two thousand and seven focused on literacy and dropout rates from Preble High using data. I presented these reports before the school board or leadership teams. Furthermore, I developed online version of the survey and regrettably, I'm sorry, lost my spot. I worked on the survey and met with officials to implement this across the high schools and middle schools. Regrettably, this did not happen. For the record, I did that work pro bono. Given that there are local educators and researchers capable of doing this work, it is surprising to me that the district would retain the services of an outside organization at a sum of money that would be greater spent locally. I have read in the media that the Air School District provided nearly four hundred thousand dollars to AIR for its first year at Washington. I understand local officials are pleased with this investment. Now AIR is asking for an additional amount of two hundred and eighty, and obviously we know that's now two sixteen, for second year of consulting. To what extent has the board sought to put together a local team of emotional, behavioral, social, and educational experts to examine the problems at Washington? Beyond the amount of money spent, I am concerned with matters of local autonomy. I recognize that there is a range of opinion on this, but that is mine and I would ask that it be discussed. I also find myself uneasy about the selection of AIR for this work. In two thousand and three, U C Berkeley professor in Ethics versus Realism and Anthropology, a book concerning commitment to professional ethical conduct and responsibility in the behavioral sciences, reported that A I R has served as the research hub for clandestine intelligence produced by academics for use by the CIA and the Defense Department of Defense. For example, AIR ran the Defense Department's counterinsurgency program in Thailand during Vietnam. AIR has an ongoing relationship with the Defense Department. Some board members may not know that there is a broad and enduring debate in the academic community about the ethical propriety of working for or using outside organizations that extensively serve war-making institutions. It is a discussion worth pursuing. In a New York Times article dated nineteen ninety-four, Charles Murray, author of one of the most notorious books, The Bell Curve from nineteen ninety-four, which claims that intelligence is unequally distributed across racial groups and that this distribution is an innate feature of racial differentiation, revealed that he worked for seven years as chief scientist with AIR. Murray describes his experience as formative. In fact, he worked on the Thailand Project and according to the Southern Law Poverty Center, wrote in his report about the potential applicability of the findings of counterinsurgency operations in Thailand and the United States. Who did AIR have in mind for this application? In Murray's words, "In many of our key domestic programs, especially those directed at disadvantaged subcultures, the methodological problems are similar to those described in his proposal. And the application of the Thai findings at home constitutes a potentially most significant project contribution." One might counter that this was a long time ago and that an organization should not be judged by its founding purposes. I leave the relevance and significance of the facts to the judgment of the board." Last paragraph. Finally, a senior consultant at AIR is an advocate of charter schools and school choice. Prior to joining AIR, Taisha Adams served as Director of State Services for the National Alliance for Public Charter Schools, an organization the Walton family of Walmart helped establish and enjoys among its fans, the U S Secretary Betsy DeVos. Adams is not isolated, is not an isolated case of charter school advocacy at AIR. AIR expresses the following on its webpage. AIR has a history, reputation, and track record for supporting states, districts, and stakeholders with school choice efforts and activities. AIR is at the forefront of neoliberal reconstruction of the of public education, and the act of paying an outside firm to do this work is itself a mark of neoliberal philosophy. Perhaps there are members of the school board whose orientation is neoliberal and are supportive of charter schools. If so, then this information will likely not strike those members as significant or worrisome. But I do find it significant and worrisome. I am suspicious of an organization this deeply involved in the neoliberal reconstruction of Americans, America's public school system, receiving my community's resources. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Christina. Next is Janet, is it Angus?
Hello, I'm relatively new to this issue. However, I did watch Ms. Westcott's.
Could you restate your name?
Oh, my name is Janet Angus.
And your address?
Um, my office is at thirteen eighty-three West Mason Street in Green Bay, Wisconsin. I became involved in a matter and decided to get more involved in school issues, so I've watched a number of your school board meetings online. And I did watch Ms. Westcott's statements that were made regarding Washington Middle Middle School. I think that was about, what, two years ago, year and a half ago? And, you know, I was really concerned. I pay a lot of property taxes in Green Bay. I, I in fact went to Franklin Middle School. I'm a graduate of West High. And recently, I decided to look up the test scores at these schools. I was not impressed. The element, my, my, my question, I'm not going to digress into all of the areas, but my question is very specific for AIR tonight. You indicated that, I believe, a tributary stream exists and looking at if students are ready for middle school. So my question is, what are the elementary schools like that are coming in to Washington Middle School? And if these elementary schools are not meeting basic requirements, how can you expect students to do well at the middle school level? Now, you have a lot of fancy talk here. I don't understand half of it because I'm not an educator. I'm just a lawyer and I'm a personal injury lawyer and I'm pretty basic. But, you know, I went to school a long time. And I think that the school that I was looking at online, the elementary school, who had a nineteen percent proficiency in English and an eight or nine percent proficiency in math score, is not acceptable. If you have children coming into Washington Middle Middle School, my humble opinion, with low scores, how do you expect them to achieve anything? And how are we failing them at the elementary school level? So, if you're looking at the wide spectrum of elementary school feeding into middle school, then feeding into high school, maybe that would explain the eighteen ACT scores that are found at, I think West High's score is eighteen percent. I did not look up East High School average ACT score. But I don't think these scores are good enough for Green Bay. I think our students need better. I think they need a lot better. And I don't know how to do that. I don't know if you know how to do that. But I do know that these children deserve the best, that our community can give them as far as a public education goes. And, you know, without a good education, what do they have? What will they have in the future? And this is your job to figure it out. Hiring a fancy consultant from someplace other than Green Bay, going to do that? Or are we better off relying on our staff here and putting two hundred and thirteen thousand or two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars into our elementary schools? Let our teachers get that money and do something in the classroom. Because it just doesn't start at Washington Middle School. If you don't have discipline, in my opinion, if you don't have discipline, you don't have a teacher, you don't have an environment where you can learn at, starting in third grade, some of these schools, or three-year-olds, they start at some of these schools with Head Start programs, what are we doing? Our community is only as good as safety and our school systems and our infrastructure, in my opinion. And if we don't have good schools and we don't have good infrastructure, we don't have safety, what have we got as a community? And after listening to Kirsten Westcott's speech, I don't know, how safe is Washington Middle School? Has it gotten better because of AIR being there? Are students still swearing at teachers and saying horrible things and doing things that I found totally unacceptable? Or has this become the norm in our school system? And it has become the norm, if it has, then God help us all. Because in my opinion, in sixth grade, an eight percent, eight or nine percent proficiency in math in a day when we are technology, computers, all these things, and some of these underprivileged schools is just not acceptable. So I hope you address that. Hopefully you address those root causes in your study. And I hope that you look at that because it just doesn't start in seventh grade, sixth grade. Starts third grade, or it starts when they're three to sixth grade. And and if you don't have that discipline and and wanting to go to school and wanting to learn and wanting to read a book, I don't know how you instill that in children, but I can tell you, I don't think eight percent math and nineteen percent reading scores are acceptable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janet. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? All right, we'll continue on with our discussion.
Brenda, Brenda, I have three very quick statements from the public as well.
Okay.
So can I give them to you?
Sure. So, what's going on here?
I'm also going to read some statements from the public. Oops, sorry. Help, I'll just hold it. So if you want to call the first person?
Okay. Is the board? This is sort of setting a new precedent.
Isn't this what Christina just literally did?
It is.
It's very short.
I don't think it's, I don't, I mean, if we want to discuss after today, going forward, how to handle these types of requests mid-meeting, we can have that discussion later, but I think we've, we've, we're doing it right now. So I think right now, yeah.
Okay, thanks Christina.
Just wanted to, just wanted to double check. All right, the first person here is Tiffany Hoffman.
I just want to say that the city council actually also has done this for citizens that maybe for some reason can't make it to the meeting or really want their voices heard but feel intimidated, which this is a very intimidating experience, so I can see that.
And their city council members read it?
Yes, and that's.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so Tiffany Hoffman is actually, she's a parent, Washington Middle School parent. And she had asked that I had read her statement that, measure that she had sent to me. She could not be here tonight. She said, "The vote tonight to spend another two hundred thousand on math and literacy consultants is extremely important and to fully understand the value of projected results gained with spending that kind of money is important. It's true with the socioeconomic area and temperature of violence that goes on there is a concern that education, not only for those who are challenged to be able to learn, but for those who are distracted and cannot learn because of less than desirable happenings around them. As a parent, it is a huge concern and has been the topic of discussion in our household many times. In order to get test scores up in math and literacy, there has to be a safety and security factor met for all students. Domestic violence, absentee parents, drug use in the home are a few issues I believe put many children at risk of falling through the cracks." And a topic I'd like to address in so many schools, it is a topic I'd like to address in so many schools, not only in our district, but nationwide. Mental health resources is also something that is lacking. It's too bad that monies can't be final then for more counseling as I feel this is an issue that our local schools need to address. The ratio of school counselors to students has dropped significantly at an all-time low nationwide. It's at its lowest point that it's been in thirty-one years. This information comes from the statistics found in the American School Counseling Association. Association. One in five children suffer from mental health issues, so maybe putting money into having more counseling staffed at Washington Middle School would be a good asset to not only the school in the community, as well as the community. People who feel safe can learn, reducing depression, bullying, and even the suicide rate can lessen. Counselors can give the scaffolding needs to academically develop." And that's from Tiffany. And who's the next?
Next one is Alona Winsel.
Okay. Alona is a teacher, a DePere resident. She's a teacher in the Green Bay Area Public School District. And she asked that I read her statement as well. Where is it? I will find it. Apologize. Okay, she had every intention of attending the board meeting, but she heard her back and she is not able to be here. Regarding the vote, I think it would be a mistake to continue on with the consultant group for Washington Middle School. I hope you and your fellow board members have taken the time to really take a close look at Washington Middle School and have listened to teach. at Washington Middle School and have listened to teachers and parents. I don't think, no matter what data is thrown your way, that this firm has helped enough to warrant spending that much more money. Something needs to be done, but this is not the answer. As always, thanks for your time and work." That's Alona.
And then lastly is Tim Meyer.
I took a picture of his. "The board must have a chance to read what was done, when and how many people were, how many people spent, how much time was doing what, and what is still needed. Most important, what were the measurable objectives set in advance? To what extent were they met? And were they met and why not? Equally important, what is the probability of achieving a result with the proposed additional activity? Many consultants will be as brief and vague as possible. This enables claims if total or partial success and/or ways to explain how the lack of success was not their fault." And that is Tim's comment. Thank you.
I guess.
Do we have any other members of the public with the form?
No one else fill out any forms? No, that's through the open forum for, after the special board meeting is over. You would like to speak, sir? Is it about air? Okay, we can have you do that after. Did you fill out a form? Oh, okay, I got it. Oh, okay, and is your topic on the school board training?
First of all, just current topic.
Pardon?
I want to discuss.
Oh, you do also want to speak on this topic too? And then, okay, and then you have a second topic that we'll call on you later for? Is that right?
Later at this meeting?
Yes. Or is, when you say school board training, are you referring to the air? Proposal? Okay, that's my confusion. So go ahead, you can come speak. I was confused about exactly the topic that you had described, so go ahead.
My name is Dave Boyes, 123 South Quincy, Green Bay. And I've been listening to the people that were talking. And I have a little bit of a disjointed reply. You know, I just, at the last minute, decided to come down here because I was considering not coming and I got overwhelmed by wanting to be here. So generally, I think this expenditure isn't a good idea as a preliminary bottom line. But I think the attempts to control the problems without serious efforts to find sustainable solutions are troubling to me. There was a mention of culturally responsive practices and stuff as I listened here. But I think that the root cause is not being addressed. And the root cause is going to take maybe several cycles of classes to, you know, it's like an engine that isn't running right. You know, you got to check all the symptoms. Like, you might have to replace a bunch of different things, you know, like gas in the engine and carburetor cleaning and stuff like that. But I think, I think the main root cause is the lack of emphasis on a civil society and the proper educational environment structure. Basically, I suspect that some students and parents may have developed an intergenerational tolerance to an uncivil society. Some students may have been gradually programmed to be more disruptive than others by socialist indoctrination. Some students have become addicted to the power that civil disobedience gives them at an early stage of their lives. So they, they just accumulate a sense of power that they derive from different levels of civil disobedience. And the most civil authority in front of them is the school system and the instructors, the local police, when they're on school break. I believe that this two-year training program will provide a temporary rock to hide under to try to mitigate the socialist challenge to traditional values. I mean, this is a gradual thing over the years, and you can't reverse it right away. You know, I think the basic school curriculum should be centered on becoming a good, a good citizen, basically. You know, above everything else. You know, it has nothing to do with celebrating this and celebrating that and dividing into classes and all this mention that I had, the word struggle and stuff, that's a buzzword for socialism situations. You know, we've got to really care about these people one at a time. I know there's all these different problems that they have, like where they come from and who they associate with, and social media and cellphone addiction, all kinds of stuff like that. But I believe that we've got to substitute sustainable, traditional, healthy values for political, social engineering. And I'm a guy that saw Eisenhower when I went to West High School. You know, so I'm not, I'm not really trendy. I'm not, you know, a lot of people say, oh, you're just an old sucker. You know, you're going to be dead pretty soon. But, you know, I believe that these, these traditional values are glossed over and it's almost like everybody for themselves. And the people that rise to the top are the people that are able to stress the people around them more than others, you know. And there's all this competition for top dog and stuff like that. I would just love to have an opportunity to actually go on the side of Washington High and do my own evaluation for just a little while and write a report to the board and get to interview some teachers. And I, I think that this air training skirts the root cause. You know, you got to, you got to grab a stinking bull by the stinking horns. You know, you can't just let everything try to slide off your back. You know, you can't sit there like you are and expect to throw money at a situation, make it go away. I know Tony Evers is our educational guru right now. And maybe he could direct some efforts to focus the school system on traditional values in a civil society so that students in general, over several generations, will try to get back to a more civil society. But you can't cure this overnight. And I don't think it's a Washington High in particular that's the problem. It's just that, you know, when you have a cauldron stuffed, some, some things sink to the bottom that are in the cauldron, you know. So it's just a particular mix at that particular situation kind of causes a light to be shone on. But I have tremendous compassion for the instructors that have to deal with obtaining good outcomes from each individual student there. You know, I feel really upset at what they're going through. And then locally, some of the students that go to Washington High that are in the neighborhood, they have just disturbing, kind of disruptive values in some particular cases. You know, generally, most of the students just kind of blend in, but there are some that kind of wander around in packs, you know. And they're used to disturbing. So all summer long, they're disturbing things, and then they go back to class and they want to show off the new tricks that they learned over the summer. So basically, I seriously like to be contacted by someone on the board and offered an opportunity to see for myself because it's like you get the stiff arm when you go near the school. You know, you can't see this, you can't think that, you know. And I'd like to officially request an opportunity to see for myself and share my, my observations. So that's pretty much it. But I know that with this program, I went through the woods one time, and I go through the woods if I push all these bushes aside as I went through. But when I, when I let go of these bushes and I looked behind me, I couldn't see where I was. And I believe that that's the effect of all this money. You know, as, as you're in the program, you can kind of see some results. But if you suddenly turn around, like they say in Korea, they say, whoops-soul, you know, you know, what happened here, you know? So that's pretty much in a nutshell. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, we can certainly get you communication with the principal and have you visit Washington Middle School. Absolutely, the door is open. So I apologize if you think that you can't get there. I'll make sure you get there, so know that. A couple of thoughts as I've been sitting here, and I know a little bit of data that might be helpful to the board. One of the things that has been mentioned a couple of times is the large turnover. And if memory serves me well, and I know that I've got Human Resources, our new executive director in the room, it's about 8% if I recall accurately. So it, I, just a clarification. I guess that we didn't have a number, so I think that that's one piece. Another thing I just wanted to point out, and I really appreciated the history and that they're, I'm very interested in talking to the professor from the university regarding American Institute for Research. One of the pieces that I find it of interest, and this is where I keep going in my head really confused after hearing all of that, is that they were the partners that worked with the state of Wisconsin, the Dr. Tony Evers and myself and the others to start the Wisconsin Urban Leadership Institute in partnership with the Urban League. So I'm a little confused about that and will want to learn more about that as well because that certainly doesn't seem to add up in my head. Okay, but I just, I just put that out there so you can see, you can see my confusion. I'm not, I'm not refuting it. I'm saying I'm confused about it because they came to my attention when they were working with the state of Wisconsin and the Department of Public Instruction. So that being the case, I think the other piece for this important conversation is to recognize that, again, that the students at, and I think about that whole notion about how are the children? And I appreciated the other testimony that came forward about the children. When we spend a fair amount of time thinking and valuing the children, and I think about the, I keep going back and it's rattled in my head so many times. The Masai tribe talks about how they greet one another, how are the children? And when everything is going well, they say the children as well and everything is going status quo. But when the children aren't well, the focus is really around the notion of what do you do to reset? And I want to take us back in the focus around Washington Middle School and the focus around really looking to disrupt the status quo was a real focus to bring in American Institute for Research that has a long history of disruption in schools and changing a trajectory. So that was really the conversation and the impetus around this. I think that as we look to the results, I think we all agree that it isn't where we need or want it to be. That's absolutely true, absolutely. Three, three out of nine, I believe, is that accurate, Judy? And I think that's what. But more importantly, I keep going back to also thinking about the trajectory. And I know that there's a lot of anecdotal information out there and going back and disputing whether or not the behavior data is accurate and whatnot. I think that's really the key, is, is to be able to stand up and, and, and look in the mirror and say, will this help to improve children today? Will this help? Has it helped and will it continue that trajectory? I think that at the end of the day, whenever you introduce a new intense universal in a school, and many of us in this room have run schools, and it's not always popular, and so people aren't always comfortable. But more importantly, I go back to Judy and Cindy Olson, Principal Olson and the team, and John and Vicki, and say, how are the children? And is this the reset we want to continue for the next year? And then do that important investment. That's really what this conversation is about. And that's where it began, and that's why we're here tonight as well.
I just want to say, I, where I sit with this is that I think the concerning data is around more of the behavior. I think there's been definitely a trajectory change in terms of achievement. And I know the behavior piece is twofold. And one of them is the engaging instruction in classroom and to help classroom behavior, you know, that's critically important. But I'm, I'm, and I, I've got a lot of things going through my head at one time. But I, and I'm glad to see that there's, there's increased emphasis this coming year on the behavior. You know, not as much from air because that's not necessarily their area of expertise. They're really the turnaround with instruction. But I think we have the Boys and Girls Club coming in. We have our, the halftime Franklin, Washington Behavioral Interventionist. We have the principal, Ms. Olson, in her second year. I mean, she, she took on a lot last year and has learned a lot. And she's changed some structures in the school really to address the behavior by having the same group of teachers, have the same group of kids. I think that will help with consistency with, with behavior and help teachers help each other, figure out how to, how to work with some of the kids that have been challenging. I, and again, this was a lot to take on last year. And I know a lot of people worked really hard, the administration and the staff. And there, there is a trajectory change. And, and I'm not comfortable pulling that rug out and saying, we're getting rid of what we just did last year. You know, I think we've, we've had a struggle having consistency in Washington, and this will be the first year they have a consistent, you know, the same associates and the same principal from year to year. And, and I like having Mike Freeze learning and really figuring out how to, how to spread that. But at the end of the day, my, my concern is that the Washington students don't just need behavior interventions, they need an education. They need good instruction. They need to succeed academically. They also need to succeed in terms of their social, emotional status. And I feel as if there's a combination of, of resources that are being put in the school, the structural changes, and then continuing with air in terms of helping coach teachers with, with really good instructional techniques. And that's, those are the reasons why I'm going to be supporting moving on for, for continuing the contract for one more year.
I'll go. So I'm going to stick with what I know because that's how I need to operate on this. And what is that? I know that three out of nine goals, set objectives, goals were not met. And so when I look at that, I think about, to me, that's, that's not, that might be good enough for some in this room. But I'm not really interested in good enough at this point. I think our kids, our community deserves the best that we can do. I also. I also would have to wonder about, what's the incentive for AIR to actually improve if they can literally come into this situation, make $30,000 a month and meet three out of nine goals? I just don't, that's unclear to me how anybody thinks that's a good idea. I think it's very obvious that staff is not buying in to this plan. It might be anecdotal, but I'm not going to discount all the voices that were comfortable enough and courageous enough to reach out to me this past year from the school building. Considerable amount of people as well as other citizens and staff from other buildings as well. I do appreciate the conversation around looking into the culture and climate plans around CHAMPs and other things that are in place for the schools and Franklin as well. But to the point of the schools coming into, the feeder schools coming into Washington Middle School and Franklin for that matter, think what we could do. We don't need AIR to actually invest in the culture and climate of the building. I just don't believe we do and I'm sorry, a lot of staff doesn't believe that as well because I haven't heard from them. But it's also, first of all, how do we know that this is actually the, you know, the three goals that were met out of nine? How do we know that that's not, how do we know it's attributed to AIR? We don't really know it's attributed to AIR. Maybe these teachers actually were able to just do that on their own. I think it's a very slippery slope to think that we cannot trust our teaching staff to do the job of academics. That's why we hire them. And frankly, that's why we have a considerable amount of administration with high level of education as well. I think there was a comment made, many of us in this room have run schools. We have that in this room, we have in this district. When you have an outside entity who's coming in, collecting a very nice paycheck and isn't meeting the goals, not even half of the goals, and we're still willing to continue working with them, then we do have to start thinking about, if we do have that many people in this district who have run schools and we have to go outside of that, that's a whole nother conversation. But more importantly, my vote's going to reflect what I know. I know three out of nine goals were not met. I will honor the parents, the staff in the school as well as the staff outside of the school who have continued to reach out to me and especially in the last month. I would also say that Sullivan, Howe, all of the other schools that are in play, that are feeder schools into our middle schools, think what we could do with this $216,000 in those schools. We have a lot of ideas for Washington Middle School with the Boys and Girls Club and things that were mentioned, but what about the other schools? I mean, you're going to spread the rest of that, I think it was $70,000 across, but at the end of the day, that doesn't really, it doesn't, it sounds good, but it doesn't really add up to much. So I think personally, as a person who is in charge of essentially spending tax dollars, if this was something, if this, I keep relating to this, but if this was in another department or if this was your home budget, you hired a contractor to come in and fix nine things of your home, you know, your roof, redo your floors, your, you know, infrastructure of your storm sewer, and you gave them, they were paid $30,000 a month to take care of all this, but they only finished three out of the nine objectives that you had agreed, together agreed by the way, to meet. I cannot imagine that you would turn around and look them in the eye and say, you know what, here's another $200,000, let's see what we can do with that. You've already shown me that I can't, I cannot rely, I am not comfortable enough to believe that this is possible. It's just not there, the information's not there.
Christina, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. I'll try to be brief, I know this has gone on for a long time. I just want to thank the community members that reached out to me. I talked to parents and teachers and principals and social workers and counselors, over 26 people. It's been a busy couple of days getting back to everybody. And I just, let me say too that none of those people were supportive of this. I'm not saying that's representative, but I just found that to be fascinating. Again, those are just people I spoke with. To me, the question isn't, do we need a deeper investment? We do. The question isn't, should we be more courageous in our decision-making? We should. And the question isn't, you know, do staff need more additional support structures? They do. We also know that just hiring more staff isn't going to solve our, you know, concerns and address the whole child because just hiring more staff isn't the answer. To me, the question is, how do we ensure that our investment connects in our community in a sustainable way that we know is based on the evidence of effectiveness? And I think the letter that I read from Andy Austin tonight talks a little bit about the expertise and the passion and the skillset that we have in this community. So for me, I think that I haven't seen any data, in my individual opinion, that clearly demonstrates that the money spent with AIR indicates that that work was linked directly to the outcomes that we see even of the three out of the nine. I just don't see that. I think that Washington Middle School and their staff and their families should be absolutely applauded for their time and their deep intensive work. I know it's been a stressful year and they've really dedicated themselves to their students. I know Cindy has done, you know, she's a leader there. I applaud the work that you guys are doing here. It's not about, I don't look at the three out of nine and think, oh, it's a failure on the teachers or it's a failure on leadership. I think, for me, it's a step back to say, how can we ensure that what we're doing is worth the time and the money and the investment so that we are going to get the greatest results? And from the data that I see with AIR, I just don't see that connection for me personally. So that's kind of where I am, where I am right now.
Anybody else, Eric?
So my quality Green Bay Public School District education taught me that experiments, in order to be effective, you have to limit the variables so you can measure to see what's impacting change. And unfortunately, school turnaround is a hard process. It's not a science, there's a lot of art to it. And in conversations that I've had with administrators, sometimes that can take up to seven years. And when the school board was faced with a decision, they felt like we didn't have seven years, we needed to invest in that much sooner. AIR was brought in to accelerate that turnaround process and similar to what Christina just said, I feel like the results are mixed. And we did do a lot as a school board and as an administrative team to invest in Washington outside of AIR. And then I look to what our plans are for next year. I mean, simply bringing a principal back for a second year is an improvement, that's something that we haven't been able to say. I sat down with Cindy Olson and got to talk with her and see her investment and her passion for Washington. And I frankly think that's part of how Washington got to where it was because we didn't have that consistent leadership. In thinking about the AIR proposal the first time that we got it, got in June, you know, one of the ideas that I had for a suggestion would be to, well, what if we cut back AIR and the teachers and invested more in Cindy as our instructional leader, as a learning leader? And what I've come to learn after is that, you know, Cindy said she would actually go the other way and Judy, she attributed a lot of her success and growth this past year to you and the leadership and support that you provided and I thought that that was really powerful. I love the ability for us to grow our leaders and grow our capacity and I want to see Cindy to continue to grow in that role, but also wanted to make sure, Judy, I appreciate your leadership in this process and certainly John, yours as well. I look at the manager of student engagement, attendance and advocacy. I think that is a tremendous solution and I personally know both Dwight Hancock and Jason Thomas at Franklin and I think that they will do a wonderful job in their roles. I looked at the schedule that Cindy had up in her office that showed the looping structure and I asked Cindy what would happen if I just messed it all up and she threatened to do some things to me that I won't repeat here. Yes, yeah, she said I shouldn't do that. So, but I think that looping structure in seventh and eighth grade is going to make tremendous difference for our kids and their experience day to day and their adult connections. I mean, I'd be fascinated to see those survey results. You know, the behavior coach, again, tremendous, tremendous idea. The idea that we're going to take one of our strongest administrators, our executive director of secondary teaching and learning and imply him to those two schools, when I think about the investment that that is, that's tremendous, not only in his time, but also in the lack of investment in other areas that he could be helping to lead our district. So when I look at the success that we've had at Washington, I can't definitively say that it was because of AIR. I can pretty definitively say it's because of the talented and amazing people that we have in our district. And because of that, I cannot comfortably support AIR. This is something that I've talked to a lot of people and I've lost a lot of sleep over and this is a really hard decision and it's a battle between my head and my heart, but ultimately, I'm going to vote with my heart and not support it.
Laura?
So I've spent a lot of time with people in conversation about this as well. I've spent time with Cindy, she's a terrific leader and I've talked to support staff and teachers. And I get anecdotal feedback also from, you know, parents and grandparents. You know, we promised this school some continuity, we promised that we would, you know, give them the support they needed, we promised this community. And I can't imagine at this point, just throwing up our hands and saying, well, we gave it a year with a brand new principal and it's not good enough, so we're going to just stop midstream and try something else. What would that be exactly? What's Plan B? Because there isn't a Plan B. So, you know, some of the universal things that I heard from people are Cindy's terrific, she's a great, she's been a great hire. She herself said the same thing about you, Judy, that you've been a huge support to her. And she has told me that AIR has been a huge support to her and her staff. I think it's been money well spent, she thinks so and she's the leader of that school and I trust her. Let's see here. The other universal thing that I heard from all these people is that this school is fully staffed. I asked everybody, do you need more people? Do you need more support? What do you need as far as personnel? And all of them said, no, we're good. We're good with the amount of people that we have right now. That's important to me that they feel like they have staff. It's really important that for the first time in years, they're going to have the same admin team go into the next year altogether. There won't be anybody to ramp up. There isn't going to be anyone who needs, you know, a lot of professional development to get integrated into our school district. That is really important. But the big thing I took away is that they trust Cindy, they trust her leadership. I think about what it was like a year ago when she came before us to be hired and what a horrible night that was and how she's kind of came through that and has been proving herself every day in that school. You talk to her and she just loves that school. She loves those kids. And so when she tells me that she wants another year of support and not for herself, she feels like she's got what she needs now, but she wants it for her staff, I believe her. And the teachers that I've talked to have said they would like more support with behaviors. So I believe them as well. They are doing that work every day, that school has done everything we've asked of them. And I'm not going to take that support away from them now, so I'll be voting yes.
Katie?
I had the same conversation with Lauren, a similar conversation as Eric did with Cindy and it was, the most compelling part of that conversation was how much of her success she does attribute to AIR. Found public comment disconcerting, but you had some clarification. I really think, I trust Cindy Olson and I think I need to support her in what she sees as something that is going to help her continue to turn Washington around. And I know we say three out of six, I'm inclined to, three out of nine, three out of nine, but the 97% is really close to 100%, but it's not 100%, so it wasn't a complete pass. I just think it's important to, if a school leader tells you that something is working and really helped her and she would like that help to continue for her staff, I have a hard time not supporting that.
Andrew?
So I too have done my own research and looked into this issue and I've asked about AIR frequently since they've been in place. I've gone to Washington many times, I've asked people and the staff that I talked to felt that they were benefiting from AIR, that they were getting real positives they could use in their classrooms. And it was, there were, there was maybe, it was different degrees of positive. I heard no negatives when I visited Washington, I had a couple of comments with an email that were against AIR. But what I looked at also, my concerns going into this, when I was wondering what an AIR proposal would look like for this year, is what happens next? What's different? How are we taking in the input that we've received here? And I think there's two important things that I look at here. First of all, this is, this proposal is clear in the wording of the motion that this would be, this would be the second year of two. When we're wondering when does the release of responsibility happens, it happens over the course of this year. As we put more people into place, as we have more people drawing on AIR's research to become, to train the trainers. It's taking away the question of, because I did worry and I believe I said this when we first, when we first went with AIR and I wanted to only authorize one year because I wanted to see where things were and I didn't want to get into a long-term commitment, but I also knew that we probably wouldn't be done after one year. I think when you look at goals, if you have, there's pros and cons to having a 100% goal. There's, you're setting a target, you're setting an objective, but if one thing goes wrong ever, you can never recover that goal. So I look, I do look at that differently. I look at, I look at the overall progress and I keep, I keep coming back in my mind to teachers and staff that I talked to randomly walking around the building. If I bumped into all people who are members of the AIR fan club, I certainly did it accidentally, people talked about real strategies that they're using in their classrooms. I too looked at, okay, what about, what about the fact that we have, we have staff here that have turned around schools and they have, but everyone that I've talked to who's done it has said that they did it, they would be capable of doing it, but also their knowledge isn't, their knowledge of what's going on right now running a building is not the same. It's different, we have different circumstances here. I do, I do want to get some clarification just to make sure that I'm understanding correctly how, what options there will be for other schools, not just Franklin to benefit from AIR, but how we're going how, what options there will be for other schools, not just Franklin to benefit from air, but how we're going to spread that further. Cause that too is important, is all this money going into just Washington. And I did, I did receive a, you know, a comment about that. Where does that leave other schools? And if we didn't have a plan to have a meaningful amount of participation of other schools into getting some of what air is doing, uh, I wouldn't be able to support this. If this was an open-ended commitment that didn't make it clear that this was year two of a two-year project with a release of responsibility, uh, I wouldn't be able to, to support the, the project either. But given that those things are there, although I, I think maybe I do just need to hear a little bit more about some of the concerns of the gentleman from UWGB, cause some of those are, are serious and they're new information that I didn't have before tonight. So, given that, given that this becomes year two of two, uh, and given, given that it's something that Cindy herself thinks is, is beneficial and is helping in her school, I think continuing this for one more year is the right thing to do. Um, but I, before, before we take that vote, I guess I would just like to briefly review beyond Franklin, how other schools will directly participate in this. And also if you have any, any answers to, besides the fact that yes, air worked on other projects that share our district's values. Okay, that's great, but, um, if air has a, I need to know more about this and I, I would, perhaps that would require a, a delay of a, a week to, to get that. I haven't made that motion yet, but those would be my questions.
So in looking at, um, in looking at how are we going to share the turnaround practices, there are quite a few practices that we've already implemented. And you've heard quite often about, you, you, and you've commented on some of the, the solid, good hires that we've made. The, the hiring process, particularly for administrators, was changed through the A I R training and process that we went through. And it was meant as a systems-changing piece. And many of the, um, high-quality administrators that we've hired in the past, uh, year plus have been part of that process, including the, the, the person to my, my right.
I'm, I'm sorry, John. It, it, those are, and we've got, yes, there are some good transferable things we already got. But really looking at if part of a rationale for continuing next year is bringing new things next year broader, that's specifically what I'm looking to.
Sure. And the reason why I was e- explaining was because I wanted to make sure that we were showing, that we had examples of showing that we're applying knowledge to systems-changing practice based on, on prior training. And that we will be doing the same with additional training that we, we receive. So we will be working on, uh, training up of our district office individuals who are responsible for supporting schools. So that the supervising executive directors and our curriculum people really understand what are the, what are the essential learnings that, that have come through the A I R process and the turnaround practices that are, that are, uh, that are utilized there. We'll also be giving practice and, um, informational training to our principals as a whole, with a greater focus for our E S S A identified schools. So that would happen throughout the school year. We are still looking at what that part of the, the, uh, the work with A I R would be. We have not put together with A I R the definitive contract for that work, but it is definitely something that they have done and something that they've done with, with, uh, great effect. When I think about, why will A I R work with us this, this coming year? They have a variety of other districts with very similar needs, similar concerns that, that want their business. And the demand for such services far exceeds the supply of, of, uh, individuals that can offer those turnaround services. So we are working with them to make sure that they still want to work with us. And I believe that they, they, they do want to work with us in, in those practices. But when we think about the job embedded nature of what our support looks like, it's not that we necessarily have our principals sit down for a class. It's work that's done with our executive director who supervises school, schools. It's done with, uh, Mike Fries, who, who works with our curriculum, along with the team from the, uh, teaching and learning department, to take the lessons and apply them throughout the work that we do. Just in, is an example, looking at the scope and sequence of particular courses and making sure that instruction, instructional objectives that are going to be assessed for the forward exam and other, other assessments, that we're accomplishing that teaching before we're asking students to identify what they know within, uh, within, within that subject area. That's, that's an important area as well as looking at the, the four domains of, of turnaround practice that we shared, uh, quite, quite a few months ago during some of our initial work with, with, uh, the board. But that really is the, the summary of, of the turnaround practices that will be shared with, with our principals. Dr. Langenfeld, sorry.
As, as we think forward too, I know that, um, we've had conversations. Air is connected us to the National Organization around behavior with a tremendous amount of resources and a full analysis of, of Washington. They would provide, or actually the district M L S S, we talked to them about as well, um, in conversation. So really looking at the systemic, uh, deeper dive into our own behavior, efforts around, uh, supporting children in the journey around their, their behavior. The other piece, um, as we think about the fact, and I, I appreciate and I absolutely agree that Mike Fries is an extraordinary educator, to have him, um, each of the, uh, coaches is to be onsite twenty-seven days each, which is significant. And in, according to what I'm reading in the contract, I think that that, to me, that's a great opportunity to say, okay, what are we, uh, where are we there? Absolute national experts around, uh, best practices pedagogy. And I think to, to the point that we have looked more deeply, recognize the fact that, that, um, to truly transform, there are some significant changes that we can replicate, um, that are already in play. But, but as, as a leader and I know, um, an instructional leader for secondary like Mike is and also Nancy, um, who also support coaching and coaching models. This is a, a really important opportunity because to be perfectly honest, when I look at sometimes, um, not all of our coaches are alike, if we can say that accurately, and that the amount of, of work that's been done and needs to continue, uh, to ensure that our coaches are being leveraged the very best that they can, um, I, I believe will be also positively impacted. I, I see that there's a tremendous amount of work that's already been invested and our teachers are working really hard. So to have the best coaching as they walk through the process, and I know they've done an extraordinary job. But to be able to, to look at what's going on in the nation and move that as well, I think it'll be very helpful.
I'll just quickly add to, um, going back to a comment that Christina made at the very beginning of the presentation too. I think it's good to get our teacher voice as well. So teachers who are working directly with those coaches, what is working well for you? So that we can then take that and apply that to the other buildings as well. Embarrassed that I didn't have that piece, so it's a very important piece to have that teacher voice.
So I'm not sure if anyone's aware, but we, um, we set kind of a new precedent at this school district tonight. We decided that data really doesn't matter like it needs to. And that we're willing to move forward and make decisions not based on data or data that supports moving forward. I think that's unfortunate. I'm extremely disappointed. At the very least, that is our job as board members to actually take evidence and apply it and not bring personalities into the situation. You know, it's easy to personalize things and make, and, and shift it and blur the lines, but that's not our job. Our job is to take evidence and make the best decisions with what we have. And this is what we teach our students. We teach them that data matters, evidence-based decisions matter. But we're making an exception for some reason. I'm not sure I understand why. Um, to your point, uh, Andrew, you had talked about giving it a year and to see what happened. Um, I would ask you, as a board member, as a fellow board member, did, when you voted for the first four hundred thousand dollars of A I R services, did you picture in your mind that if they would only meet three out of nine goals, I would give them another two hundred thousand dollars? I would be pretty shocked that that's how you feel about that. Um, you know, we can, we can craft narratives to, to fit our, our needs on this. But what it comes back down to is we're giving an outside company over half a million dollars. We are not building relationships with this money, by the way. The sustainability in this professional development, um, personally should be part of, of the proposal. Going forward and saying that the priority is math and literacy, and by the way, what happened to math? Cause are we okay with that? I'm not sure how we are. Uh, going forward, knowing the challenges in the school, I fundamentally disagree that, and this is coming from everyone that's ever talked to me that's been in that school, that are frustrated. They don't come and say, if we only had better coaching for math and literacy, these kids could learn. I've never heard that. I continue to hear the investment needs to be courageous, it needs to be intense, it needs to, to, to be evidence-based. So if you think about it, as a board member, you have to turn around. If you vote against this, you're knowing that you are, you're listening to their voices, you're, you're making decisions based on evidence. I will never pretend to, to know everything about education. I don't. But what I do know is that we continue to have discussions district-wide about how to use data, how to apply concepts for our kids, where we're telling them what to do with this, but we don't apply it at the board table. If in any other business organization in this world, I'm just going to say it, pitched thirty percent, they would not get more money. And we cannot continue to ask the state for more funding and cry around that mantra when we do not use what we do have responsibly. Again, this isn't anecdotal. I'm not going to throw people's names out there and say that they're this, that. My job is to look at evidence and data. You know, we, we employ an entire department around that, this, this school district, but tonight it doesn't matter. And I'm so confused by that. And I'm extremely disappointed and I'm frankly very frustrated and sad. Because now moving forward, if you bring me data, I'm going to massage it the way I need it to be. And it's not going to be certain, it's not going to be the end-all. And that's, that is what we've always done. Tonight, that is not happening. Because three out of nine goals being met for four hundred thousand dollars, that's thirty thousand dollars a month. We did not even get close to making this worthwhile. So maybe you can normalize this, you can go back to people and, and, but the big picture is this did not meet the mark and that is what's on the table. Thank you.
All right, we'll take a vote. Oh, go ahead. Are you on, talk, Andrew?
Um, I just wanted to add one more thing. So I, I had a conversation with a teacher who teaches at Washington today. And one of the things that really stuck with me is how sad she is about how her school is portrayed in, in the media and at this board table and in our community in general. Um, so I would like to challenge everyone in this room to tell the whole story about this school. Or better still, stop portraying it as a failed school. It affects the mental health of the students, which she told me today, she hears some things from her students. How they talk about their own school, as I know our school isn't very good. That's just not, that's how they, that's how they feel because it's portrayed constantly to them that way. It affects the mental health of our students and the teachers who teach them every day. And the steady stream of scrutiny, um, affects that learning community. It filters into our community and it becomes accepted truth. When the real truth is just, it's not told. It's much more complex. Everyone knows that. And I think it's a wonderful school that's working very hard to overcome its challenges. Um, much like other schools in this district and in the state and in this country. So please think, when you talk about our, this school publicly, how you're portraying it. Because it affects the people that work in that school every day. And, um, and I, I, I'm worried about that. That's all.
Andrew, did you have something?
So if, maybe I, uh, for me, I think if, for me to know tonight, and, and perhaps I missed it, or and perhaps it's something that needs to be flushed out more specifically with, with air and that hasn't happened yet. Like, I need to, I need to see what's different as far as other schools having more involvement in this. So I would say a school learning something through something that Judy has learned from air, that would happen whether there was a Washington-only focus to air or a broader involvement of other schools in air, or, or you, John, right? So that's valuable, but that would happen even if we had it be a Washington-only program. So I need to know, like, how, how is that going to look different? And do we need another, if that's something we would need another week to know how, a little bit more about how that's going to look, I'm, I'm okay with that because I don't want to rush something like this. I also am wondering if there, if, again, is there any, do, do we need to take a bit more of a look at the, the issues brought up by the gentleman from UWGB? Because there, I, I think there might be enough, there may be enough positives to outweigh a negative past or people who used to be there. But it's, uh, some pretty serious charges that came, uh, suddenly.
I think that we, um, given the circumstances, it would probably make more sense for the board to decline further contract with A I R. The concerns we had related to the support for Washington were that, again, similar to what, what Ms. McCoy said, that if we continue to use Washington Middle School and attaching it to A I R as the reason for the controversy, the negativism which has been part of the dialogue is causing more damage than the good of the A I R proposal. So I'd like to, uh, I'm doing so in part from my opinion, not necessarily, uh, I defer to Dr., Dr. Langenfeld. But before we began the board meeting, we were in, in consideration of whether or not we, we could bring it forward. And we felt that continued controversy around Washington doesn't support Washington. And we would prefer to focus on solutions. And if A I R has been something that's come back month after month out of concern, if it's become the, the divisive issue, I'd rather focus on what are the solutions? And I, I really would like to know more from the board about what it sees as the, the changing courageous solution that we have not come up with yet. Because what we're looking at is going back to what we've done in past years. We've invested money, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars into additional staff, into- into trying to do things different, into looking at principals and feeling like they were not the person that we wanted and changing out the principal. So I would, I would ask that we give consideration to withdrawing the proposal until there's a different environment in which we're ready to hear what can be offered.
Thank you, John. I know that, um, we have engaged in this conversation very seriously and I talked to some members of the board about it. The piece that I would ask, and it continues to be, is that are we going to let Washington move forward? I think that that's our concern, uh, we feel very strongly that if we take, if air, you know, we know that that's been an important investment for the school, there will be teachers who will find this very problematic. Um, more importantly, it goes back to what you said, if not this, this was meant to be an investment. Right now, I know that, um, the money is for twenty-seven different coaching sessions in math and literacy. Um, and, and I share the concern that if we just focus on behavior, we will not be able to, I don't know who was here in the room that talked about their, their, uh, I believe it's our attorney here who was a graduate and came through Washington, did I misunderstand?
Frank West.
Frank and a West. Similar though, in terms of opportunity. My point being is that this is an investment, um, and if the board chooses to, to move forward with it, um, I think that, um, we would do a very good job with continuing that trajectory and supporting it. I, I have grave concerns and join you, Laura, in the concerns and the trajectory around, um, the conversation. And again, if it is a question of if this becomes and continues to be a place where, where people hang their hat all the time and, and put failing school in the same breath, um, it's not, it's not healthy and it does go back to the children. Yep, the staff, but the kids, the kids feel it, the kids see it, and, and nobody's worked as hard as Cindy and her team and the staff to change that. So I just put that out there and I, I, I agree with you, um, John, in that, and we've had that conversation. And again, it's, it would be, I, I have grave concerns about, about pulling things away um, without the investment, you know, sometimes the, the district and especially central office gets accused of keep changing, keep changing, keep changing, and it's, it's, do you keep moving forward because you do see movement progress? That's all.
Oh, Christina?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused how we were now using words like negativism, controversy, failing school. I didn't hear anybody say that Washington was a failing school. What I, I heard in that conversation was, we care about our students, we all agree we need support, the teachers need support, Cindy's important, we care, we care, we care. I didn't hear it's a failing school at all. What I heard from this room was a consensus that we care deeply. What we're talking about is ideas on how we meet their need. So it's not an either-or, it's not, it's an investment in air or it's nothing. We all agree that it needs an investment. So if air is not the investment that we think is going to get our students and our staff what they need, if it's not teacher-supported and student-centered and backed up by the data, then we take that investment and we go back to the drawing table and we say, what can we do differently? Because we are committed to your school, because we care about your school and because that is the central idea that brings us to this table. So in my opinion, I'm getting a little fired up here because this isn't negativism about Washington. Nobody's sitting here saying teachers and staff fail, I didn't say that. What I said was, they should all be applauded for their work. What we're talking about is, is if A I R fulfilled their contract responsibilities and their duties and if we feel confident that they are going to be the continued leaders for this school worth the investment of additional two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. If we do not spend that two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, I think we should, with A I R, I think we come back to the drawing table and say, what does that look like? Maybe we have a, we go to the ta- teachers and say, what would you like to see if you're staffed and you're, and you have a low student-to-teacher ratio, right? That's, we don't need any more staff. What do they want? What do the teachers want? What do the parents want? So I don't know what that is because I'm not them and I would never sit up here and assume that I know what they need. But it's not an either-or, and I just wanna make that very clear. The money is there, we are committed to Washington. The question on the table is, is air going to be the turnaround partner? Are they going to get us the results that we need?
I just wanna clarify that I was relaying the feelings of a teacher who is tired of the public narrative around this school. She works in that school, she deals with the students, she hears from them, she hears from parents, and the narrative is negative. I don't, I think we'd be naive to think otherwise. We've had two-plus years of it and it's hurting that school, that learn, it's, it's hurting that learning environment. And I am not going to discount what that teacher's told me.
And I'm not discounting you, Laura, I, I'm just saying that in this conversation, we all agree that Washington is a, is a great school that has great leadership and has good teachers. And that theme of, you know, it's not a good school, cross-cuts a lot of our schools. And so that is a culture that we need to overcome and demonstrate to our community, you're absolutely right. My point is just saying that was, in this conversation, we're not, that's not where this is coming from. The conversation was centered around air, so I apologize if that, that wasn't directed at you, that was just a general observation. So thank you for that clarity.
Rhonda?
Okay, I would echo everything that you've discussed about the negativity. The motion on the floor at the table is to approve another year with A I R services. And I'm using the information that I have available to me, which does include conversations with staff. Now, I know that, um, superintendent mentioned that teachers will find this problematic. I did not hear from one of those teachers personally. And you would think if, if you're a teacher that wants this to pass, I'm a person you're gonna reach out to, right? Let's be critical thinkers about this. You're gonna reach out to me and you're gonna let me know how much you support this. So if there's enough teachers in that building that think this is gonna be problematic, I'm gonna hear from at least one, and I have it. Who I've heard from are the people that say, this is a waste of money, it's internal decay, those are the words that were used, and that we need more support in other areas. Again, very encouraged to hear the ideas that are happening there. Two things can be true. I support the additional services and everything that was discussed at the ta- this table tonight. But as a board member who has heard from a ton of people in that building, some people who do, who no longer work there, by the way, I'm interested in reality, it is my job not to decide if I like people or not, is to look at a proposal, the money invested, and make a decision with the, with all of the evidence that I have in front of me. If I can't do this tonight and I'm just going to have thoughts and prayers, right? A lot of people in this room probably use that narrative and say, you know, school shootings, thoughts and prayers, you know, we don't believe in that. I don't either, actually, for the record. I believe in looking at concrete evidence, data-supported decision-making and the human piece of it. If I would've had teachers messaging me that they absolutely need another year of this, I wouldn't feel the way I do about this, but I have not heard that. And again, I would be a person you would reach out to. We all know this, sitting in this room. It would be me, you would want to, so I, 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 I can sit here tonight and I'm sure, assured that the problematic negativity is not going to come from this not passing. There will be more of an outcry, there will be more people. Hopefully, there'll be more people lining up to run for school board personally. But there will be, the negativity will not decrease, I can guarantee you with this decision, if it passes. We have great ideas that we discussed tonight. One of those great ideas is not moving forward with this proposal. And the evidence tells you that story. Thank you.
I just wanna push back on that a little bit.
Microphone. What's that, microphone?
Oh, sorry. So the teachers I talked to, um, who, who brought their concerns to me, um, I said, well, you know, you, do you feel like you would like to share them in, in open session? And, um, they said no, because they're afraid to come before the school board. And they're not afraid of, um, they're, they're afraid of how they will be portrayed. Um, the last time we had, uh, teachers come to Wash- from Washington Middle School to talk to us and to give their sincere concerns, um, they weren't treated very well. And they had threats and there was a lot of negativity. And that came up in my conversation today. And when I said, well, uh, you're afraid of retaliation and, and they said, not from administrators, they're afraid of retaliation from school board members and they won't come. That's just what happened today. And so, yeah, you might, you might think that, um, you might think that teachers would feel free to reach out to school board members. But it's a lot more complicated than that and we all kinda know why. They were treated badly the first time, why would they come again?
Andrew?
Okay, um, this is, so I, this has gone in a kind of strange direction here and I'm very, I, I'm, I'm wondering now because, and I, I would've been, i- if, if I had the same kind of, um, if I heard, if I heard a strong negative opinion from staff that I went to, um, I would've been done talking about air a long time ago. I probably would've let the administration know that I wasn't in a place that I could support air, but that's not, that's not what I heard. But I, obviously, there's some, you know, maybe some kind of a, a split here that I'm not aware of and I need to, to learn more. I think it's, to me, I think it would be reasonable to, and I, I know that this can't be, I know that this can't drag out indefinitely, it can't be a lot, it can't be weeks, uh, but I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone the vote on air until, um, the next board meeting, which is in one week. It would give time for some, any remaining questions or, or feedback to be, to be gotten. And then, again, not with the, and I don't intend to make another motion to that effect again next week, I'll say that now, is to give one week to research some new perspectives that were brought forward today with a final decision a week. So I, I moved to postpone for a week.
Andrew, what would it take for you to vote on this tonight?
I don't, I don't think this is just, I don't think this is just about me and what would it take for me to vote on this tonight. I, I think we had some important perspectives come up from the community and I think I'd like to see a little, I, I'd like to see more about how other schools will benefit. And I think, I think there's a, I think there's a plan for that, it's just, uh, this, this come up quickly and there's still a little bit to be fleshed out about it, but I'm, I'm confident that other schools would, would have a chance to be involved in it.
The person that came forward from the community offered up research from two thousand and two and three. Um, some of those things were, um, quite old pertaining to A I R. Um, I, I mean, I can't give that a lot of credit at, you know, all these years later.
Can I just, okay, I'm, this is, again, you know, you're right, this is getting confusing. So research, it either, research and data either matters or it doesn't. So we can craft it how we want it to be and we'll cherry pick what matters as far as reality. But does it matter or doesn't it? Because, I mean, that's not a concern of mine personally, there's the obvi- what we do know that shows this fell flat matters to me. But it's an interesting conversation around what actually matters and what doesn't. What is our bar, what's our line in the sand of, of what we're willing to use as evidence to make decisions? I have a question for you, Andrew. What would you need to hear that would make you not vote for it? So what is it that, what's the, because I appreciate you wanting to take the time, but what is it that you're looking for that is the, it's the, it's the game changer, it's the deal breaker? It's just, this can't, I can't sign on to this. If three out of nine goals not being met with four hundred thousand dollars of money invested, I'm not sure what you could hear that would, I mean, what is it then you need the exclamation point to say no? And I'm, I'm sincerely asking you that.
Okay, so when I, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a bigger, I'm looking at a bigger picture here and what, whatever we do, whatever we do next year, if it's air, if it's not air, here's, here's what I'm gonna do. Because this, this, I think, didn't, didn't help our discussion tonight, whichever way it goes. You, you can't, i- if you're going to have, um, right, we do whatever goal, saying when you talk about the, the SMART goals, the attainable goals, okay? I didn't put a lot, I didn't put a lot of stock in a, in a, um, um, in a goal about getting to an eighty-five percent, um, response on our school operates as a team. And I never, I never once thought, knowing, um, knowing that the number, knowing that the number of agreement was fifty-four percent, had, had I thought that in a year, that not getting to eighty-five percent from fifty-four on a survey was a, was a make or break goal that was gonna come down to this, I would've saved us the trouble and said, statistically, it's very unlikely that any intervention could move you from fifty-four to eighty-five. By the same token, I, I think, I think, uh, sure, I, I wish it was higher, but a good motion of staff on the staff survey, um, percentage-wise, on the, um, academic expectations are just right, they're not too low. That's, uh, that's related to air. Um, you know, that's, that's an, that's an improvement. I, again, I would not have said, okay, we have to get from thirty, um, from thirty-two to sixty, uh, I would've saved you the trouble and said, in one year, you're not going to hit that, okay? The, um, so I've, I've, I think I've said, um, I would, I would like to che- I would like to check a couple, a couple of things on the, the background of, of air that came from someone who is a respected professor at U W Green Bay. I think, I think my concerns there probably, probably will, will be a lead, but I think it's, I think what, I think that, that question, um, do I, do I put, do I give it a huge amount of overwhelming weight? Nope, but I think it was enough, I think it was enough to justify one week. And a little more ti- and a little more time to, to show how, uh, because it's not just about saying that we're gonna bring the other, other schools will have an opportunity. I think it's, I think it's showing us, here's, here's what the other, here's where other schools are gonna physically get a chance, you know, whether, you know, maybe it's some job, maybe there's some job-alikes that other schools might get to do, um, We could have a good, we have good information. And I, I would imagine probably that people might have more opportunities to talk to, talk to staff over the next week. But it's not really about that. It's about, it's about these, these two things. And it's about a week, and I did make a motion to postpone for a week. So, we should deal with that motion, and then...
Yeah.
I have information that...
Okay, can we, we'll just second...
I do have information that would have possibly affect your decision as to whether or not to, to move for another week. And that would be that I will not be here next week. And Dr. Wiegand will not be here next week. We are not in, in Green Bay. So, if there's new information that would be shared, it would have to be shared by others. And so, that, that may influence things. So, I just wanted to put that out there. I apologize for, for cutting in. But I, I knew it might be something...
We should second the motion before, is there a second to Andrew's motion? We can continue discussion.
I will second it, and I'm not believing you, Benny.
Okay, so then, go ahead, Doc, you can go.
I think, Mr. Becker, I share the concern about what was brought forward by the professor. I, I said I found that confusing, much less troubling, because that, that would not be somebody or something that we should take lightly and dismiss if it's accurate. So, that would be, is there a way? I mean, I think one of the pieces that, that I have concerns about, I, I don't know that, besides creating greater clarity about what, what that expectation with AIR would be and what the additional staff, what else could be gained in a week's time. What I would offer, and I don't know how you take a vote with the caveat that if they are aligned with what was shared, that, that's problematic. You know, I don't know how you make that investment. That would be the only thing that, that I think, I don't know that we can know that answer today. That, that part I can't. What I can say is that I, I think there's opportunity to create and shape what the expectations are with AIR within that framework for, for our leaders. I know there is opportunity in my conversations, in our conversations collectively with the AIR folks. You know, what I heard here, and I agree with you, Andrew, some of these goals were, the numbers were big and way ambitious for one year. And having turned around a school, I, I know that you take incremental baby steps forward. But more importantly, I, I go back to, if the, if the board chooses to make this investment, one of the critical, critical pieces that I would offer that has to happen is that as we set these metrics of what this, their investment is looking like and what our public's investment is looking like is beyond just the framework of the, of the opportunity that's laid out. It talks about all the additional coaching hours and the metrics. But again, as part of the co-interpretation, if I recall, some of this came out of that. Is that, is that accurate? The metrics came out of that discussion? I, I'm not sure of that. But more importantly, that would be, you know, if we're measuring other things other than these metrics, then we, they would have to be part of that investment over time. So, I, I put that out there. I think, I think that that's the opportunity there. And again, I don't know that anyone wants to engage in a company that was described like we saw. I, I'll be really honest, I, I was taken aback by that, so.
So, other than the complication of Judy and John being gone, I mean, if we're, if this motion is just asking for some information, is there someone else that can provide that?
We can certainly provide it. But I think that the piece that I would go is that you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have everyone at the table. I think that, you know, we can certainly lay some things out. I can certainly help with that. But I, but I would offer that, that the advocacy piece in the team that is here tonight really represents the work and the, and the ask. And I join them in that, obviously, but I think that that's an important part of this. You know, I don't know what other discussion the board would want to have and make sure that we have the right people at the table to support the, the work, so, you know.
Well, this is Andrew's ask, so I'll ask Andrew.
I, I really think it's just, it's a chance for everyone to get a little more clarification. I think the, I think the administration's case for the, for the positives of, of AIR has been, has been laid out. I think the case, you know, and if you're, and like I said, I'm, I'm not playing to do this, and whatever we do next, you know, it's, it's tricky. And maybe you need a different word, maybe, maybe you need to have certain, you know, having 100% as a target serves a strong purpose, but it is a certainty of, of missing the target. And so, and so is, statistically speaking, so is taking anything that's survey-based from a 50, from a 50 to an 85. So, whatever, whatever happens next. I think, it just seems to me that there were, you know, a, a week here is a good idea. If not, then, you know, vote no on postponing it. I don't think we'll need three hours again next week. I think there's just a couple of, couple, and I'm sure it's probably not the first time AIR has been asked questions about, about the, the past, or... So, that's, that's my, that's my request, is the delay for a week.
Christina?
I'm sorry, Andrew, I don't want to wait. I mean, we're talking about a consultant company. A lot of these turnaround partner consultant companies aren't really that different, to be honest. I mean, I really wasn't surprised by some of the stuff that Andy had talked about, because I kind of shared some of that last year whenever I came and talked about the initial AIR proposal. So, I, I appreciate that request so that you can gather more information. But I think we need to make the decision tonight. The other thing I'll say too, around the conversation around the nine objectives and the three out of the nine, here's the thing. If you wanted to, if we wanted to show that a high demand from the teachers, because I agree, people don't want to come and talk. And that goes whether they're happy or not happy, right? Whether they like it or not, nobody wants to come forward. But if you have those three out of nine, and you're saying, "Okay, how am I going to illustrate to the school board that these teachers absolutely want it?" We would have done a robust teacher survey for Washington Middle School that would have said, "We need this, we need this, we need this." And we don't have that. We don't have that. So, whether the teachers didn't want to come because they're afraid, or the administration and AIR didn't build that into their report, at the end of the day, the data doesn't support it, and the teachers haven't demonstrated to us that they want it because we never surveyed them in a robust way that communicates that. I think we need to take the vote tonight and move on.
I'm not sure if you're, you're listening to the conversation around the process, right? The turnaround process. So, we have established, and it was said again by the superintendent, that we've turned around schools. So, the process that lays the groundwork for the turnaround, potential turnaround of a school, it was told to me that it was well thought out, the co-interpretation, setting metrics. Now, we're saying that we're questioning that. So, it's interesting how we're trying to hide from the fact that three out of nine goals were met.
Hang on, Robert. Let's, let's take a vote on the first...
Actually, you know what, that's a, like, sorry, that's the third time you've interrupted me. Please let me finish. No, I need to finish this.
This isn't about the question that's on the table. This is about the next question that may or may not be on the table.
And that's fine, but what I'm just clarifying before we get into something else, and I would love to finish, and I think it's important because this probably won't be the last time we do this, we talk about this. But if we can't attach ourselves and be committed to the process that the district set in place for this turnaround, the metrics that were out there, now we're not sure if it was the right thing because it doesn't fit our narrative to continue forward. We have to be really careful about that.
I'm not, I'm not changing the, what I'm doing, what I'm saying is that there is a different purpose of a 100% goal or an 85% goal. That I, I look at a goal like that as a long-term target and not as a make or break after one year. Because like I said, I, I, I think we all knew what the answer was about getting from, getting to 85% after, after one year. The answer is no. You, you, it's, it's almost physically impossible to, to do, okay? That, so, that doesn't make sense to me that that not reaching 85 on something in one year is, is the same thing as, as missing other types of targets that are... Again, there are different purposes to these, to these targets. The 100% target is a, is a goal. It's the, it's the highest bar you can set that you can't reach. It's a reminder to keep, to keep striving. An 85% bar is a long-term target. There, there isn't anybody that is going to get you to 85% in a, in one year. But I, you don't want to set low bars either. So, but I do think the, we do need to make a decision on the, we do, do need to make a decision on the delay, on the delay for a week, which I think is a, a good idea that can clarify a few more things. I think we need to make the decision on that.
All right, so we'll take a roll, roll call on that.
Can I just, to address that, about this question?
All right.
Um, I'm more inclined to take the vote tonight and defer to what Michelle is saying about vetting out, and then with the, the option, to not sign it. Because I think we've discussed it, and we, and that's my only concern too, Andrew. That's the only reservation I have. Um, that's the only reservation I have, because I, I appreciate data. I don't see data as a black and white situation. I also appreciate input from teachers and administrators. And when the, the leader of the building tells me that it was beneficial to have them there, I'm going to trust her and I'm going to support her. But I don't think putting this off a week is going to get us where we need to be. I think if we vote on it tonight and not sign, if we find some, some reason not to, I would rather do that. So, I will not support your week delay.
I need to know how that works legally. Passing something and then saying, "But if we uncover something that concerns us, we're going to not sign?"
She said we, the board has offered the district the option, the opportunity to contract, but we, but it doesn't make it binding. Is that right? Come forward. Press the one with the voice coming out.
We still need to negotiate the contract. You're authorizing us the ability to enter into the contract to award the contract to AIR. But there still's the negotiations. And sometimes after boards give the district administration the authority to contract, you're not able to come to an agreement, and then a contract is not entered into.
Okay, thanks. All right, uh, John, go ahead, John.
Could we also put, we, we could, if there is a agreement that we're passing it based on whether or not that stipulation is met, we could also work with AIR and work, work amongst ourselves to put together a more formalized plan for what the turnaround practice training could look like. Not that it would be shared as a, as a board presentation, but it could be something that could be shared with the board president and, and vice president if that was assuring.
Are you talking about with, as far as using it district-wide?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes. Thank you. So, I'm, every time we do something, I try to think of what, what is, what is the headline? What's the takeaway? What is this going to sound like, look like? So, "The board asked for metrics through a heavy-duty process" that brought the community in. Nope, gonna just let, stop.
No, Robert's rules will tell you that we're addressing the motion that's on the table. And the motion right now is to put this off a week.
Yep, gonna get there.
And I'm, I'm going to get there, though. We're doing this, the board is deciding that we're going to put the brakes on because we might have uncovered somebody that's involved in this group that didn't deliver what they said they would for the money they were paid. That, this is the headline, okay? The brakes are put on because of this. So, the next time that this school district wants to go to a referendum, this is what people are going to remember. And I think it's important that, you know, we might have short memories to help ourselves throughout this, but people, the community does not, thankfully. So, holding it to uncover something, even though what is put in front of you, the, the metrics that we asked for, that, that, that this, you know, process asked for, didn't deliver. So, we're trying to find some other reasons to, you know, to ignore that is a very slippery slope when it comes to asking the community for referendum money. Just want to lay that out there. That's my thoughts. Thank you for letting me speak.
Fine. Sandy? Okay, we're voting on whether to delay the vote. One week, yeah, Andrew's motion.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
No.
McCoy?
No.
Did you push her?
No.
Sheldon?
No.
No.
Sitnikow?
No.
Vandenhove?
No.
Warren?
No. So, it was, what's the word? Defeated, thank you. All of a sudden, defeated 6-1. So, now we have the original motion on the table that we are taking a vote on tonight. Sandy?
That doesn't mean that discussion was necessarily closed on the, the former, on the main motion, unless someone had called the question.
Oh, do you have something else?
Well, I, so, why, I mean, don't we have some idea as to how the, how the other schools would be directly involved? And, and I guess that, it was my reason for the delay was more to give time to look at, at that than it was about, um, I, I mean, the other, I take the other thing seriously too. And now I'm going to have to decide not knowing, but I mean, any large organization, there's going to be some past concerns, although this is a pretty serious one.
Sure. So, when we work with our, our principals on new content around new learning, we, we value our, just, just as we expect to value our students and what they bring to the table, we value what our principals bring to the table as well. And we look at it more as a professional learning community where we're taking knowledge that's in the room already, but also looking at where are the lead learners in the school, the principal, in their continuum of growth. So, thinking about, we, we don't want to give a universal dosing to everybody that's exactly the same. But we would be giving a, a general summary, and in, in great detail, in a environment that would be supporting our principals in thinking about best adult learning practices. So, it would be a model in which there was collaborative work together and that there was a partnering, as, as you had mentioned before, Mr. Becker, where we would be allowing principals to work with one another, pair up and work in groups as, and this is actually something that, that is part of our process that we're learning and incorporating already, that would have been part of our, our retreat, the, the second half of the retreat, is really different, principals are focusing on different areas of improvement. This would be an, an aspect where particularly our ESSA principals could be gathered together, as well as others who are interested during principal meeting time or other opportunity. And they would actually receive content training from the AIR coaches that are coming in, the people that have, have used these practices in schools and effectively, effectively turned around multiple schools themselves as principals and now as coaches. Thinking about that, there are ways that we work with our principals when we're working with new content. Again, it's not just a lecture, sit and get type approach. It has to do with partnering with our principals on a regular basis through coaching practices, as well as group work together. And Dr. Wiegand can explain a little bit more about what that process looks like.
So, um, part of my work as, um, executive director for secondaries is to certainly work directly, um, with each individual principal, but also as a collaborative learning team and bringing the principals together. So the practices and so forth that Cindy has learned at Washington and then the application of those at, whether it is also at Franklin as well as Edison and Lombardi, um, we can all learn from those. And so those are monthly meetings that are held. Um, and again, being able to differentiate what that looks like because a Lombardi is in a much different place when it comes to their systems and how they're responding to, um, when it comes to curriculum assessments and instructional practices versus, uh, uh, another school. So again, it'll have to be differentiated, but again, all can learn from the practices that are being brought forward.
Also, this work has been done by AIR with other districts. And so I'm, it won't, will not be a problem for me to reach out to AIR and have them share as a template that we could work from. We, of course, we wanna differentiate it based on the needs of Green Bay, but we can look at what that planning and what that support has looked like in other districts that have contracted for similar work and share that, uh, so that people have access to that as, as part of their, their, uh, decision-making process.
Laura?
Maybe it'd be a good time to just, um, think back, um, a little over a year ago when we were talking about hiring a turnaround partner. And can you just give us a brief history lesson about how AIR was vetted and how AIR was chosen? Sorry about that.
No, I'm trying, taking a, a tired trip down memory lane, trying to, trying to recall. But we, um, we, we went through a process of an RFP, re, re, request for proposals. And we had established criteria for which we were, what was it that we wanted to seek in a turnaround partner? And we laid that out for the request for proposals. That was shared. And we looked for submissions based on, on, uh, what it was that we're looking for. There were a number of, uh, turnaround partners who came forward, not a vast number be, because again, the, the, it's a, it's a, um, market economy in which the demand is higher than, than the supply of turnaround partner, um, entities. And so when we looked at our partners, there were three that we gave serious consideration to. And what we felt was most effective is, as I remember, uh, correctly, is that, that, uh, the, the model of application that AIR had was clearer to us and that it, it really, um, the, the process of the co-interpretation and how were they, they were going to listen deeply to what the staff said and what they, 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 they would learn through the use of data and the, the conversations with staff, that that was something that, that we were very interested in. It was also the, um, the structure in which the, the way, the way in which the services were being delivered and that it focused on not only instructional, change of instructional practice, but it also focused on cultivating the leader and making sure that new leader was effective as well. We had also done some work with AIR with the training related to the, uh, to the principal hiring practice and administrator hiring practice, which we changed significantly in the district. And that was a very productive, satisfying product, uh, product and process that changed the way we hire administrators and was involved in our hiring of, of, uh, our, our tank principal position today as well as our, our Franklin position. So those are, are things that we, we looked at when we were making that choice.
And one of the things I've heard, uh, regularly, um, from teachers primarily, but some administrators, is how, um, much superior the hiring process is now, um, the AIR process and how effective it is, um, and how much they like it. Some, some of the teachers I've spoken to have been part of that process, so they're, they're really happy about that. But I guess the bottom line is, is, um, AIR was fully vetted.
Yes, it was, it was fully vetted. And then we also, um, when, when we went over the proposals and when we had our initial proposal shared, we had additional questions for, for multiple entities that had brought forward their proposal. And we, um, based our decision, not only what was in the original proposal, but what was, what was ascertained when we asked deeper questions that we had to make sure that we were aligning what we needed with what the service provider could, could agree to.
Thank you. Rhonda?
Okay, so we just established that the co-interpretation process was solid. That's what we're saying here. And we're saying that AIR listened deeply to staff and then they determined metrics. So we're going to commit to the metrics, I assume, based on all of that conversation. I hope, um, it was also just discovered and communicated that, um, Laura said that A, AIR was fully vetted and you agreed. So if that is the case, then it's highly unlikely that you, would you have discovered something in the process? Or did you go into the backgrounds of, I mean, I remember doing a glass door search on AIR in general and, um, that, what I found there was problematic. That was another part of my decision. But we're, so we just said that they were fully vetted. Now we're, we have concerns. We're not sure if they were. So again, it's, it's still a conflict. I would like to wonder what the principals of Sullivan, Howe, um, Tank, what would they do with an additional $200,000 for social emotional behavior, um, challenges in their school? I would love to be in the room the day that you actually, you know, had that conversation with them. And, and I would wonder about the impact made to take that money and actually apply it into the schools that feed into our, the most challenging, I'm not gonna say failure, cuz I'm not gonna say that and I never have actually, by the way. Um, I've never said that word. But the challenging schools that we have that feed into our middle schools, what would it be like to take $216,000 and, and apply that in ways in, that we could use that for social emotional behavior challenges in the classroom?
Sure. Great, great questions. So thinking about the airing of air, uh, we looked at what were the, what were the, whether or not they had met criteria for us based on the decision-making that we had based on what our need was. We also looked at the resumes of the people that had participated and that would be providing service to make sure that they had solid, reputable, multi-school change effectiveness. And we also looked at what were the schools within which they, they, they were working, uh, to see, did they deliver on results? And, and tho, the answers to those questions were yes. There, I, I'm very curious too about the information from 1994 and, and 2003 about, uh, can, you know, work in, 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 um, Thailand and other areas. I'd like to learn more about that. I, I heard recently on, on social media, there was a car crash in the community and some, somebody wondered if it was AIR-related as well. There are different things that occur. And I'm not make, I'm not trying to make light. I, I did make light. I, I maybe I will.
Sorry, that was actually kinda funny.
So, uh, yes, I was making light. It, we've been at it for, for three hours. But I don't know what happened in Thailand during the Vietnam War related to AIR. That wasn't part of the screening process. I, if they have, uh, been part of serious transgressions, that would be something that morally would violate my code, the superintendent's code, our supervisor of schools code. Um, thinking about, would we work potentially ever with a Department of Defense school to share information or, or research? We, we might do that in some, in some point in some time, but you could also say that entity had a, a different relationship to clandestine activities and things of that nature too. Where do we, where do we draw the line? I would not want to work with an organization that had really serious, really deep concern about that type of work. So that would be something that would be of, of, of concern of mine. The board did address three major things that they wanted us to focus on with the last meeting, which was the price tag is too much if for gradual release. We wanna hear more about what you're doing for student behavior and culture and discipline. And what is your plan for applying this throughout the system? And so based on that, I, I really appreciated that, that governance piece because it allowed, allowed us to reflect deeply, go back to deeper con, conversation and communication and come forward with what I really believe is a better plan to address behavior, to reduce the amount of the contract and to make sure that we're really deeply considering what that, that, uh, what that change process looks like. And when we talked about the data from the co-interpretation, they were agreed upon goals. And there was a degree between deeply attainable goal and aspirational goal. So that's what, what we're referring to is when we set a hundred percent goal, because we wouldn't wanna say ninety-nine percent of the students at Washington need to have a positive relationship with at least one adult, because that would say, who are the eight or nine that aren't going to make it? So the, the aspirational goals are, are in there. And I think it's important to have a mix of aspirational and attainable goals. But I would also say that if we were in a plane that was crashing and that trajectory of that plane was headed towards the ground at a pretty steep, uh, descent, and we wanted to change the trajectory of that, that plane and the tr, the, the plane evened out and was beginning to, to climb a bit, even though we might not have achieved, achieved the 10,000-foot altitude that we had hoped for, I would still be considerably happy with that result and not wanting to revert back to our old strategy. So I would hope that, that there is more than a black and white with the data. And I think that the positive trajectory is really where the proof is in the pudding.
I'm gonna just finish that, um, thought I was having. So we continue to talk about the, the school perception surveys and that seems to be where, you know, we're struggling with, with the, the goals here. But it is, I'm sure most of us can agree that student discipline being handled, operating as a team, I believe that our schools can do that without spending an additional $200,000. That's the question on, on the floor, on the table. And we continue to, so I'll give you two more goals, okay? So now we're, we're up to five out of nine. So we still are going to say that we're not going to take this money and put it into where the, where the needs are the greatest, right? The, the heavy-duty, social emotional needs that we have in our schools. We have money. We know we do. It's, it's on the table. We could make some serious impact with that money. But we're deciding tonight that we'd rather give it to an outside consultant company who did not deliver in their contract agreement with us. That, if I'm a, if I'm a journalist, that's what I'm writing. That's my headline. That's what I would put in there. And it's hard to defend that because I cannot, again, stress how the needs in the schools of the students for early intervention coming into Franklin and Washington. If we're not willing to be honest about that, I've sat through expulsion hearings and I'm just gonna say this. And I've looked into the history and I've consistently said this and I will consistently repeat it. We have students who have significant needs in early childhood as well as in the elementary school. We have money. We all know this. We have money we could put into these schools right now to address these needs. But we are going to make a decision to take that money and apply it to a company that didn't deliver what they were supposed to, that was a part of a community process. And I personally, at this point, the, the state of the district, where I have a daughter who's going to be an eighth grader, at this point, I don't care honestly if someone is, is having cocktails with Betsy DeVos and is crafting something that can make game-changing, significant game-changing decisions for our school district. At this point, I think we're, we have to think about facts and what we can do with our money. And again, the, if you believe that you think it's a good idea to give people money that didn't deliver, good luck the next time that you wanna go to a referendum.
I have one piece of information that's an answer to the second part of your question, which is what could we do with that money? What would the impact be on the schools? Thinking about that $216,000, it is a lot of money. In the economy of scale of the district, unfortunately, it's less than a tenth of one percent of our district budget. Still though, it's a lot of money. So what would that look like if we dispersed the $216,000 amongst our multiple schools? It would be approximately $5,000. If we div, so we might look at the question again and say, what if we dispersed it just amongst our neediest schools? It would be approximately $18,000. And with $18,000, you could buy a, a twentieth of one person's contract to work with and service kids based on the rough approximated value of, of a, uh, certificated person. That is valuable. It does have value. But if I'm looking at a tenth of one percent or less to invest in the whole, uh, district to be a changer of the way that we, we serve universally, I would put my money towards the, that investment as opposed to $5,000 per school.
So I spent some time, um, not that long ago, talking with a, a, a principal of a Title I school who was crying to me, saying that, um, some of the aides that she had in place through a grant were disappearing. And she talked about the significant behavior changes that she experienced and what that looked like for her school and her, in her classrooms and, and the playground as well. Um, incidents went down. Um, she felt the kids were, were, were just having a better experience at school. So that was very valuable to, to her and she was very concerned about that. So these are the things I think about when I think about, you know, she's losing that, those extra supports. Um, sometimes it is just a matter of somebody on the playground. It's just somebody to build relationships and make connections and be present, an additional human being in front of the students. And I believed her. I believe that she meant every word of it. Um, and I will stick to that. I mean, we can say we don't have enough money to, to make an impact, but if we're, if we're willing to take this and, and hang our hat on people that didn't, you know, didn't do what they were supposed to do, I'm willing to gamble that money and, and send even one lunch aide, one, uh, playground aide, somebody that this building leader believed made a huge difference in the experience in, in their school. So we can dissect this all we want. The money didn't deliver. We have it and we have needs. Those are the three things that we know.
Is everyone ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I have, I have one more thing. Where, how do we get to, I, I, I just can't get past the fact that we got so, and I, I recognize that different people may have seek out different board members with an opinion. Did, did we, I mean, where are, did, did, was anything reflected in survey comments? Nothing? No, 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 not a separate survey, but we did do this school-wide survey that had free response comments.
Say something.
We're not allowed. We're not allowed to have comments unless they're, um, remember, we went through that whole thing? The board isn't allowed to have comments and that's related to the board, so.
Yeah, no, that's actually not, that was not, for, well, first of all, I wasn't necessarily asking about reading specific comments. Second, that, that isn't how that works.
But I, I think you're exactly right, that that is a, in, a misstep, right? Because that would be able to bridge the gap between who's saying what and what staff actually is looking for. So, yeah, I mean, it's definitely problematic.
So then you can agree, Andrew, that you're making uninformed decisions?
I'm not agreeing that I'm making it. Uh, here's the, my one regret after this, uh, and I, I did multiple times, I've been in Washington multiple times, I've asked multiple perspectives about air. I, I guess, I guess I wish I talked to more people, but probably at some point or another, don't, don't we all? Uh, it's just very, I guess what, what it comes, what it comes down to on this difficult vote for me in, in the end is I, I'm reminded of this rule that I've set for myself and it hasn't let me down yet, that, um, my that I used to get chewed out by the paper for abstaining too much because I would do that if I thought something had its good parts and its bad parts, that I had to be 85% on board with something before I could make a commitment to it. And, and there's enough, there's enough negatives that if, and since we have to vote tonight, I cannot, I could not honestly tell people that I was 85% there tonight. I can't, there's too many, and it's not about, and this is not about Thailand. Okay, this is not about Thailand 20 years ago. It's a little bit about, it's maybe a little bit about charter school advocacy, and it's really probably a lot about how, how we have such deep differences of opinion. I hope that we will get past this and look at, you know, taking away the positives that we heard here, which is that there are, I think we're committed to spending money to make things better in Washington and finding a collaborative way to do that. And I, I look forward to our own next step, and I don't, and I, and I do think, I do think that we gained a lot from what we had for, and I do not think that the, and I'll stand by this till the end. The one, the one year that we, that we did do was not a mistake. I think we got, we got a lot from that, but that's ultimately, after these three and a half hours, I, I can't tell people tomorrow morning that I was 85% or more on board tonight. More than 50, but that's, that's not enough for the sake of a commitment.
Just for clarity's purposes, so we're talking about an investment of about $200,000. In terms of just getting clarity from the board, is the expectation Rhonda's model that we give the dollars to each of the schools is a Christina's model that says we're still investing in the school? I think one of my real concerns now is, is as we move forward without a plan, I think what is really unsettling now is to figure out in mid-July what that plan would be. I think more importantly, though, I think is that to recognize that many of our schools have additional resource and title dollars coming into the schools, and Washington does not. Our middle schools don't receive title dollars. So this investment, I mean, the investment that was to be made is for teachers, for professional learning for teachers. And I think that the piece around it is that if, if it's not air, if we're talking about professional development, there's the social-emotional learning piece that we're working on collectively, there's the investment of the individuals that we talked about. And so then the question is, what is the expectation of the board moving forward? So that I have a team of people who've been working very hard to be able to deliver. I have a principal who is counting on this resource, or at least asking for the resource. The question is, I'm not sure she's counting on it. What is the expectation now from the Board of Education moving forward so that we have a very clear direction in this vote, what this vote really means? Because I'm not sure I'm clear anymore what the vote means, so I just put that out there.
Christina.
Michelle, I think we have a very clear plan. AIR is a piece of a much larger plan for Washington, for Franklin and our school district. So when you said we don't have a plan, I actually respectfully disagree with you because I think the plan speaks to the work of you guys, what you have done, Champs and Mike Freeze and the support systems and the behavior coach and all of that really great stuff. That's fabulous. We need to, we need to be committed to that, in my opinion. We should move forward with that, and we should look at, in my opinion, the resources and the services that AIR was going to provide. And if it doesn't pass, then say, okay, what of that do we still need? How do we connect with resource, how do, how do we provide those, right? And then what are some other opportunities if we go back to the staff and survey them and say, is there something else we could be providing you beyond the services of AIR? And how do we do that with our community? So I don't, I think it's a really critical question, and I'm glad you asked it. I think we would have to have a decision, and we would need to have a much longer, you know, discussion on that, but I'm appreciative that you brought that up.
Thank you, and I appreciate the plan. I'm talking about the impact and building capacity in teachers for English Language Arts and Math as well. And the question then becomes, is the board giving the staff and the team the authority then to go out and look for other resources to provide that gap in service and support that is needed? Or is the expectation to do more social-emotional and focus all the dollars there and not address the academic components? I'm just trying to gain clarity around that right now because I think, I think tomorrow morning, we're going to have to have some conversations with Washington. That's all, I put that there.
I hope that, moving forward, we actually really get into talking to the staff. We talk to the monitors, we talk to the SLAs, student learning advocates, we talk to the teachers, the librarians, all of the people that are really living the decisions that we make. I hope they're part of how to spend this money, how to move forward. I really hope they are. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I just, I just want this clarity again. So tomorrow morning, if this were not to pass, does the team have the ability to go look for other resources to invest in math and reading? Or is it one of those where we go to staff and say, how do you want to spend it? That's really what I'm asking then.
My concern with going to the staff as to how you want to spend it is you'll get 50 different opinions as to how it should be spent. And, you know, I think we've invested in a, in an organization that has a track record of turning around schools. It feels very last minute to just bail on a plan that, again, that a principal who we've all agreed is, I don't know if we've all agreed, but many have agreed that is a, is an excellent leader, and she's looking at what air brings to her as a very important tool moving forward. Not the only tool, and we certainly, again, we've talked about all the other investments regarding behavior in there, but, I mean, I still am concerned if we don't move this forward because now you're asking a piecemeal approach to addressing math and ELA instructional support in that school when that's going to cost us money, it's not going to be free, when we have, when we have an organization that has done this before and, and again, has that positive track record. And I would, I just feel as if we're letting the school down by our last-minute pullout of a plan that they've been working on for a year. To Andrew's point, it's the final year, and I just, I, so I'm not able to give you guidance because my, my position is still to move forward with air.
And I would argue that, I think, and I've heard from teachers, and I do value their voice, that there would be much more movement with the culture and climate of the building being balanced and being tended to in a much more significant way. I think, from what I've been told from a lot of teachers and staff, is that until we actually get control over that and we take care of a lot of the challenges in that area, you can do all the professional development you want. But that is not addressed the way it needs to be, we're wasting our money, so.
So are you okay with spending $216,000 at Washington for mental health and behavior?
That's actually not what I said. I've been consistent when I've been talking tonight about making sure that the schools that are coming into, we have plans already, we all, we established that tonight with regards to some services coming into Washington, which I'm very encouraged to hear. I'm very happy about that. I consistently talk about the schools that are feeding into Washington Middle School, and that that is where we should be spending the money. When I look at the information that I received for expulsion hearings and I look at the behaviors and how these kids basically get set up into failure by the time they get to middle school, it's happening all in the elementary schools. I will never steer away from that. I will absolutely, hands down, always fight for that.
Eric.
I think that, I think that we've invested a great deal in Washington. I think we have a great plan going forward that, again, I, I believe that the work of our staff has just as much, if not more, to do with the success and turnout at Washington. John, I appreciate you saying that back to 2014. You know, we've done something similar to this before, but where you're wrong is we've never had you, we've never had Judy Wiegand, we've never had Cindy Olson. And we're better than we were in 2014, I believe. We know more about trauma, we've trained our entire district. And I also feel that, you know, with respect to the conversations around the negative atmosphere and the negative talk in the community, we need to get past that. And ultimately, what made that, what made my decision tonight is that I believe that continuing to contract with AIR keeps that negative vibe in the community. And that, again, it wasn't easy, but to me, that's what I see, is that contracting with AIR. When we talk about a plan, Washington never knew that, you know, that, we never talked about this as a year or two, so this was never a part of the plan. I understand, and I do respect Cindy Olson's opinion, and that resonates a lot with me. But I look at what we have in place, we're increasing in other areas that we haven't done this past year. And if you came forward with, with another recommendation to provide services that was informed by the voices and across the district, I'd be willing to listen to that, and I understand that that sounds counterintuitive, and I apologize. And I can imagine what it's going to be like to come to work tomorrow and to feel like, but I don't want you to feel like you're starting over. I want you to get the message that, that me personally, I guess, talking for myself, believe in you and support you, and I look forward to helping out however I can to be a part of the turnaround process. And I just, I just can't get behind that contract. So I don't know if that provides any more clarity. That's where I'm at and where I'm coming from, and we'll, willing to listen to conversations around what we can do to continue to help all schools in our district because I think we've, we've got a good plan to help out Washington next year.
All right, are we ready to vote? Sandy.
Warren.
Aye.
Brandon Hoobel.
No.
Sitnikow.
No.
Shelton.
No.
McCoy.
Yes.
Maloney.
Aye.
Becker.
No.
Okay, it's defeated three or four to three. All right, next, we'll move to our regular board meeting. Is there anybody, first, is our open forum, is there anyone who would like to speak for our open forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to our teaching and learning work session that'll be facilitated by Katie.
Thankfully, we have one item. And the motion is that pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 120.12, Pren. 13, Pren. B, the list and description of the 2019-20 school academic standards in the areas of mathematics, science, reading and writing, geography and history as presented, and with said academic standards constituting the board-adopted standards that are required under Wisconsin Statute, Section 118.30, Pren. 1G, Pren. A, be approved.
Second.
You cut me off. Just back off her. I read it, I read it as a motion, and you did. You did, that's good, that's good. I appreciate that, usually, but not.
So this, are there any?
This is something we have to do annually. Hearing nothing, we'll move that forward, and that concludes the teaching and learning work session.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion and go back into closed session.
We, okay, organizational, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I can go through that. Organizational support work session, that'll be facilitated by Andrew, sorry, Andrew.
Okay, we have no items on organizational support. That doesn't mean that things didn't happen in that department, but it was either covered earlier on the special or certainly there will be some late hires that'll go on to the superintendent's report next month. So that concludes my report.
All right, so then now I will entertain a German into closed session. Or do we have to, probably should read it. You don't have to re-read it?
You don't need to re-read it.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there a second with Laura's movement?
Second.
Okay, Sandy? Sandy? Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Hoobel?
Aye.
Carried seven zero, convene across the hall.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.